Get ready. Hi. Good evening, everyone. Please take this opportunity to grab a seat. Welcome to the City of Lemon Grove's Special City Council Meeting. I would like to remind everyone to please silence your cell phones. And City Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Altamarano.
Here.
Councilmember Fayai.
Here.
Councilmember Hridia.
Here.
Mayor Protem Mendoza.
Here.
Mayor Snow.
Here.
Mayor Snow, we have a quorum of the city council.
Wonderful. Councilmember Fayai, will you please lead us in a pledge of allegiance?
Ready to begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Today, we will have the County of San Diego Temporary Housing Project at Troy and Sweetwater. At this time, I'm going to introduce our city manager, Lydia Romero, to introduce the meeting facilitators and the county staff.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and City Councilmembers. I am very pleased we are doing our meeting a little different tonight, but I'm very pleased to introduce Claire Strong, our meeting facilitator. Claire is an accomplished communications strategist with over 20 years of experience as an anchor and a reporter with the BBC and KPBS. She's also served as a meeting facilitator and a debate host. Erin Byzek is her co-facilitator. He's a longtime local leader with experience across healthcare, nonprofit, and government sectors, and he will be managing questions from the audience. I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Strong so she can talk about the meeting process tonight. Ms. Strong.
Thank you so much. First of all, thank you, everyone, for being here tonight. Really, really appreciate you taking the time out of your Tuesday evening, so thank you for that. Before we get started, just a couple of safety guidelines, please. Exits, so there are three exits, two at the back and also one halfway up the empty side. My guidance assistant is a pointy hat, please. Please do not congregate in the aisle. So none of that, just in case you need to obviously access them. And restrooms are located out the back, on the right-hand side. Just turn right by the Ford Fountain. And in case of emergency, please just see calmly out of the exit, following the lead of staff. So, let's get on to tonight's business. Now, I'm sure many of you will have lots of questions and want to repeat that on tonight's presentation. And in order for everyone to feel seen and heard in the green and whole house we have tonight, I'd like to go over some guidelines with you, which we really appreciate you providing. First of all, be respectful. Treat everyone with kindness and dignity, but please don't boo or cheer. Focus on these issues and not the individual. So no personal attacks, please. Share both constructively with other people who may have been useful to you and need to respect those. Participate with attention. Pay attention to the reasons of purpose and pay wisdom to what's discussed. And finally, just be open-minded. Allow other people to have their opinion. Let's create an atmosphere where everyone feels safe to voice their points of view. Anyone who doesn't follow those guidelines will get sued. So, this evening is actually a really great opportunity for the community to ask questions and be prepared. If you'd like to speak, go to the public comment section of tonight's meeting, which will play after the presentation. And please fill out a speaker slip, which are on the table right at the back of the room. If you don't want to speak publicly, but still like to have your voice heard, then you can fill out a card that's also at the back of the room. And my post-facilitator, Aliza, will read your comments out loud on your card. So, without further ado, city manager Romero will now introduce the county staff.
Thank you so much, Ms. Strong. And just one correction. After the presentation, the city council will have the first option to ask questions of county staff and of the project. Then we will open it up to public comment. So as Ms. Strong said, if you would like to make a verbal public comment, we have comment slips in the back, please fill it out. My team was back there inviting guests as they came in. If you choose not to, but you still want to give us a comment, we have cards back there that you can just write your comments on. Those would be part of the official record, and they will then be collated and then given to the county for their project. So, Madam Mayor and City Council, I am proud to introduce the county team that will be doing the presentation. Brian Albright, to the far left, is the deputy county administrator. Marco Medved is the director of general services. Scott Christman is the deputy director of Department of General Services. And Deanna Beck is with the Office of Homeless Services. So now, I'm going to turn it over to the county team to do their presentation.
Thank you, Lydia. Good evening, everyone. My name is Marco Medved. I'm the director of general services, and we do all the real estate and construction management for other departments in the county, including for potentially this project. We're pleased to present to you tonight the latest information regarding this Troy Street project as one of the county's efforts to help people experiencing homelessness. I'm joined by Scott and Deanna, who will talk about the project itself and the program, and they'll be up next. To provide some context on the history of how we arrived at this point, we'll go through a little bit of the sequencing here. In September of '18, the county declared a shelter crisis and affirmed our commitment to combating homelessness. Then, from 2019 through 2021, the county searched for over 1,300 sites for the use of interim housing, such as sleeping cabins, safe parking, and safe RV parking facilities. During this time, state agencies also looked at their own land for interim housing. Caltrans, who owns the Troy Street parcel, identified it as having potential for interim housing use at that time. Then, in '22, the county board approved the implementation of an implementation plan called the Compassionate Emergency Solutions and Pathways to Housing Plan. And this was to expand emergency housing options, and then the county shortlisted less than a dozen viable sites, which included both the Hamishaw site and the Troy Street sites. These met both development and program requirements, such as being near utilities, being outside of a floodplain, having access to public transit, and being within reach of support services. This plan was guided by a community engagement process, including people with lived experience, as well as several touchpoints with the city here at Lemon Grove. And then, in 2023, the governor offers support for temporary sleeping cabin projects, and the state and the county began planning for two sites, one at Hamishaw and one at Troy Street. Then, in 2024, the county board of supervisors approved and then rescinded approval for the Hamishaw project and subsequently approved the Troy Street project to move forward with development. So we've been, since then, working diligently on the design and received helpful and constructive feedback from your community that we were able to incorporate. So I'll now turn it over to Scott Christman to discuss more about the design and how it would be constructed.
The Troy Street project is located on Caltrans property within the city of Lemon Grove on the border of the unincorporated Spring Valley community. It... The Troy Street project is located on Caltrans property within the city of Lemon Grove on the border with the unincorporated community of Spring Valley. It is at the corner of Troy Street and Sweetwater Road, east of State Route 125. For those of you familiar with the Troy Street and Sweetwater Road intersection, the site is the vacant Caltrans property across the street from the gas station and the car wash. After receiving the board's direction last July, we completed the concept design and the environmental investigation. We began conducting community outreach in November of last year to gather feedback on the concept design, and since then, have incorporated many comments into the design. We hope to start construction this summer and finish by the middle of 2026. Based on the feedback that we received, we made several important upgrades. First, we changed from a repetitious, street grid-style layout to a hub-and-spoke layout, which greatly enhanced safety. Now, a security guard standing in the middle of the cul-de-sac has the ability to monitor all walkways to and from residents' cabins. The hub-and-spoke layout also increased the facility's attractiveness by locating a pavilion as the focal point of the incoming driveway. This provides an aesthetically pleasing entrance and view from the street. This pavilion also increases a sense of community by providing a centralized place for the residents to meet. We also heard that traffic along Sweetwater Road can be heavy, so we moved the gate inward to allow for an incoming car to queue off of Sweetwater Road. We also moved the restrooms with showers towards the center of the facility to make them easier for residents to access. This layout includes 60 temporary sleeping cabins with support spaces, including a security office near the entry, administrative spaces for caseworkers, laundry for the residents, storage tucked away in the corner, a pet area, and additional pavilions for outdoor gatherings and meals. Here, you can see the entrance to the site with the pavilion as the focal point, the security office along with a motorized entry gate, ornamental fencing and landscaping along Sweetwater Road, and a new sidewalk along Sweetwater Road as well. Here's another aerial view looking southeast. You can see SR 125 on the right-hand side and Troy Street on the bottom. To enhance the attractiveness, we plan to use an ornamental fence similar to the one shown here along both Troy Street and along Sweetwater Road. Here's a view from the Troy Street Bridge, and you can see the site is hidden due to the retaining wall with the ornamental fence on top, as well as the topography. The landscape design consists of a mix of native and low-water-use plants, including oak and sycamore trees, as well as coyote brush and flowering ground covers. On the right, you can see a typical decomposed granite landscape, which will be used on the interior of the site to reduce water usage while providing a stable walking service. We analyzed the project to ensure we are providing enough parking. Since residents with cars would be better served by one of the county's safe parking facilities, this facility is intended for residents without cars. We considered all the volunteers, security guards, case managers, and others that will be using the site on any given day, and determined 13 spaces will meet the facility's needs. I'll now turn it over to Deanna.
Hi, good evening, everybody. Good to be with you here tonight. Communities are safer when people are housed, and this project aims to provide safe interim housing to help bridge people into stability and permanency. As mentioned, the site will establish approximately 60 units, most of which will be single occupancy, with a few that will have double occupancy. Based on an annual point-in-time count, we know there are veterans, transitional-age youth, single women, and seniors that are some of our most vulnerable populations. This program will serve these populations who are experiencing homelessness in the nearby communities. All referrals into the program would be closely coordinated by our county's Office of Homeless Solutions outreach team. Residents entering this program are assessed and screened by our outreach teams and the Sheriff's Homeless Assistance Resource Team. Felony warrants, serious violent history, registered sex offenders, and arsonists are ruled out from the program to ensure safety of program participants. In-take into program would be coordinated with the onsite contractor and transportation to the site provided by our teams. Program rules include no drugs or alcohol use onsite the property, and all residents must agree to participate in the program, which includes extensive case management and housing navigation to permanent housing. This community would follow good neighbor practices and ensure that surrounding areas are kept clean and safe. County staff's preliminary due diligence assessment has determined that it would cost $11.1 million to complete planning, design, and construction of the site. This one-time cost includes the cost of actual cabins, which are approximately $15,000 per unit, as well as significant cost it takes to construct the site, including all preparation, utilities, grading, construction, fencing, landscaping, and all other relevant infrastructure. The ongoing operational cost for this community is estimated at $3 million per year, which includes all program costs, security, as well as site maintenance and repairs. Community amenities would include 24-hour security, site management and maintenance, hygiene facilities, internet, meals, picnic areas, dog run, and enrichment activities. As mentioned, this program includes case management, housing navigation to permanent housing options, access to behavioral health services for those who have the needs, access to public benefits, employment supports, support with disability benefits, credit repair, and many other supportive services. The goal of this program is to house people on temporary basis up to six months to help them stabilize and transition into permanent housing. County currently operates two safe parking sites, one of which is just down the road in Spring Valley. This site has been serving people experiencing homelessness in their vehicles and has operated since August of last year without any incidents or calls for service. Our other site, Magnolia Safe Parking in El Cajon, was operational for two years without any incidents. Magnolia is currently temporarily closed for renovations, and prior to launch of Magnolia, the surrounding area had numerous calls for service and was a home to a huge encampment. While the program was operational for two years, our program had no calls for service, and the immediate surrounding area only had a handful of calls, according to the sheriff's office. We aim to provide similar-quality, well-run program at Troy Street, which will lend a helping hand to those who are ready to work with us and achieve permanency. This concludes our presentation on the Troy Street project, and we're happy to answer any questions related to this project.
Thank you so much for that detailed presentation. I'll now have the opportunity to ask questions from among the city council, and we'll go ahead and start with Councilmember Yudira Altamarano.
Hi. How many questions can I ask?
As many? Okay.
Some of the questions that I have is... Can you confirm whether there is a lease agreement with Caltrans? A signed lease agreement for the property?
Councilmember, we're currently in negotiations with Caltrans to execute a lease for this property.
The other question that I had was... I read there, or I understand that there are SEQA studies are exempt for this type of project?
Yes, ma'am. We've conducted a SEQA study, and they used a categorical exclusion for this property. We can make that available to you if you'd like to read it.
I'm sorry, can you say that again?
This project was categorically exempt under SEQA, and there are certain categories that how to qualify it for that exemption. And that's a public document, and we're happy to share that with you.
Okay. The property used to be a nursery many years ago, and there's... My understanding is that there's a potential for pesticides and chemicals in the soil that have seeped, you know, into the ground. Are we doing any type of soil testing? How are... Because I understand that there is an exception if there's a potential for safety and like a health and safety concern. I wouldn't put my pets on that location, and I wouldn't put people there. So have we done any soil testing there?
We have done... In preparation for the Caltrans lease, they require us to do an aero-ly deposited lead survey of the soil. So we've done that. It's come back negative. Their lead levels are not high on that site. We've also done a Phase 1 environmental site assessment to look into past uses to determine if there should be additional investigation. I don't have the specifics of that, but I don't believe that it found anything that would require us to do further studies to confirm that the property's safe for people to inhabit.
Would that study be available for the public?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay. Will they be required to attend a program? Or what are they going to be doing during the day? Are they required to work? Attend some type of career preparation?
Hi, Councilmember. Thank you for that question. So our... The program that's going to be at Troy Street Project will work with each individual based on their needs to get them connected to the appropriate services. So every person's journey into homelessness is unique. There's millions stories out there, and their journey out of homelessness is also unique. So our team contractors that are going to be there, case managers and housing navigators at the site, will develop a case plan with each individual to come up with a set of interventions that will work for them and get them to the permanent housing.
Okay. The concern is that they will congregate around the area or outside of the area during the day and possibly, you know, cause disruptions to the community.
So we don't anticipate having any loitering around the site. People will be able to stay on the site itself. We have, as I mentioned, security and staff that are going to be onsite 24 hours. We do anticipate some people will go to work. Some people will go to their other services, medical appointments, just like any other household.
What's the criteria for admissions? I understand it's by invitation only. How is this going to be determined?
So, Councilmember, we have outreach teams currently that are... That work in the field and on a regular, consistent basis through coordinated, multidisciplinary teams. They interact with individuals experiencing homelessness out there, and we assess their willingness to engage with us and build rapport and accept services. So once they're ready to accept services and work with us, get a helping hand to get into the program, then the intake would be coordinated with the onsite contractor by our outreach team.
Well, unhoused individuals in the city of Lemon Grove have priority? Or what percentage will be allotted from the population within the property for the city of Lemon Grove?
So we haven't determined the percentage. We are working with your city manager, and we're currently doing outreach in the city of Lemon Grove. And so we will be assessing that as we move forward with our contract later in the summer, with the contract. And so we will work out some of those details at a later date. But it is intended to serve people from the nearby communities. So generally, what we see in the field is that people who are experiencing homelessness have a geographic home, if you will. They have... They're generally homeless in an area where they have some supports or maybe family that are nearby or some kind of a resource that they are accessing and service. And so we intend to, of course, keep people, you know, in their community and work with them so they can achieve permanent housing.
So as of right now, the intention is to serve Lemon Grove, but we're not set on any number? So it could be one, or it could be five?
Yeah, those details, we have not worked on yet.
Is there going to be a background check on these people? And what type of background check?
So that type of vetting begins in the field before they ever enter the program. As I mentioned, we have the county's outreach team, and that team consists of our social worker staff, as well as sheriff's deputies. And so when we encounter someone who's ready to accept services, they are vetted through the, you know, sheriff's system, as well as some of the other systems that we look into. As mentioned, we will... The programs that we operate do not accept registered sex offenders. They do not accept anyone with felony warrants, serious violent criminal history. We plan... We want to... We will be serving, as I mentioned, individuals who are ready and engaged and want to receive services.
Okay. I heard that this project was going to house low-barrier individuals. Can you define low barrier?
So low barrier means that, I mean, people will be coming there essentially from experiencing homelessness out on the street, unsheltered homelessness. And so they may not have all the things worked out just yet, but we will have on the site, as I mentioned in the presentation, there's a set of rules they will have to follow. So we do not allow use of drug and alcohol. So, for example, they don't have to be fully sober when they're entering the program, but we will work with them to connect them to those resources. However, there will be no drugs or alcohol allowed on the site.
Just a reminder, I'm sorry. Just a reminder of the rules. Okay, so we will have that done. Okay, can we settle down, please? We're all here to listen and to learn. Okay. So just a reminder... Just a reminder about no interruptions. We are all here because we want to learn. If we have our birds like that, which are hugely disrespectful, we're not going to learn anything, so please abide by the law. Thank you. Let's... It's a pariah, thanks for that.
Thank you. So as mentioned, the program rules include no drugs or alcohol onsite. They also include no weapons, no open flames, and many other program rules and regulations that residents will have to agree to when they're entering the program. And so we intend to, for safety of the residents, staff, and the nearby community, the program, again, will request that all residents follow the rules. And if they aren't following the rules, then we will address those per the program guidelines.
We have a problem with mental health issues, you know, in many communities. How stable are individuals required to be?
So we obviously... The individuals will be required to be able to take care of themselves, so they have to be in a position where they can live... This is a non-congregate shelter, so individuals will have their own unit. And so they will have to be able to take care of themselves. And this goes for mental, as well as physical health. They'll be able to get themselves to the shower facility and, you know, walk around and be able to function in that way. We will have an access to... An access point for behavioral health services onsite so they can get that assessment if needed, and then connected to the behavioral health continuum of care that is available region-wide. And then also, that goes as well for any other physical health or disabilities and any other type of stuff that we can get them connected to so they can address that as well.
How does that access look like? Is it like a phone number, a phone line, or is there an actual person there?
There... For behavioral health, there will be a staff that's there during business hours, yes.
Okay. There are some concerns with... There are some concerns with federal funds being pulled back and the state of California being broke. What happens if funding runs out? Who's going to foot the bill for continuing, continuing the operations of the program? And my understanding is that the cost will be $3 million to operate on an annual basis. Is this fully funded by the county?
Yes, correct. And of course, county, there's a lot of, I mean, acknowledging a lot of uncertainty right now from, from all levels of government. But county has a rigorous planning process for the budgets and annually and on an ongoing basis. So we have, we work with our county's fiscal representatives to, to work on our budgets and work through any type of funding streams and any programs that continue. The worst case scenario, if in the future we, the program had to end, then the cabins will come down and the site would be turned over back to Caltrans. We don't anticipate that, but again, in the worst case scenario, that's what would happen.
Okay. And my last question. Can you give me two or three examples of certain things that will be reasons to terminate the service for a program or to kick people out of the program? What are two or three things that they, they absolutely cannot do or else they're no longer part of the program?
Of course. So some of the examples, and we have that in our other programs as well that I mentioned, is, would be if they bring drugs or alcohol and use them onsite. Also, if there's any act of violence toward staff or any other resident. Those, those would be kind of examples for dismissal. We would work with the person, of course, to ensure that they are situated, you know, somewhere else and, and work with them to the best of our ability and more, you know, to, to get them connected to other services that might help them better.
Okay. So they can't do drugs and alcohol onsite, but can they do them offsite, like outside the gate?
No, they will not be able to do them outside in the vicinity of the program.
Again, please stay quiet at this juncture so we can listen to the information. Thank you so much. So just a reminder, if people are not complying with the guidelines, then, you know, we will have to ask people to leave. We all need to listen to this information. This is a community event, which means everyone needs to listen. Please don't put that up on the hat, man. Thank you.
I'm sorry. Can you repeat that again?
Yeah, the, the residents will, will not be allowed to loiter around, around the site and, and engage in any illegal activity. So we will, you know, we will have security that secures the perimeter of our site and addresses any issues that might come up.
Okay. And to that, will there be like ongoing drug and alcohol testing to make sure that they are drug and alcohol free?
So, no, we will not be requiring onsite drug and alcohol testing.
Thank you.
Councilmember Hridya, do you have questions?
Yes, I definitely have some questions. Thank you so much for coming today. She asked a lot of really great questions. Thank you, Yajira, for that. Let me see where we're at. Does council get any kind of vote on this? Do we have any rights to say this project doesn't really work in our community?
Councilmember Hridya, I will ask the city attorney to answer that question.
Thank you very much. I just want to briefly answer your question, which is that no city approvals are necessary for the county's project to move forward. Is it the computer?
We have no say.
Correct. The county, let me finish. The county can build and operate an emergency shelter at the Troy Street property, which is owned by Caltrans, without having to consult with the city or otherwise comply with any city building or zoning ordinances. The project does not require any city approvals. The county's authority to move forward is based on California Shelter Crisis Act, the government code, and the Declaration of an Emergency Shelter Crisis by the County. All of that information is contained in the county's staff report, which is dated July 16th, 2024. It includes their sequel analysis, the basis of their ability to move forward in the city without any kind of approvals from the city. And the reason is because it's an emergency and the state has declared it a shelter emergency. And when that happens, it takes away from local jurisdictions, the ability of the local jurisdiction to have any oversight over such a shelter. So I want to be clear.
So no interruptions, please, please. It was weird to listen. So listen, just, just a reminder, there's going to be lots of opportunity for you guys to ask your questions at the end, I promise. So please, just be a little respectful. Let's hear what they have to say. And you can ask the votes at the end, okay? Thank you.
Okay. My next question is, let's see. So obviously, the, the community is not in favor of this and they were sort of duped into thinking that they had a voice. It's super unfortunate that you don't have a voice and I'm sorry that you don't. However, do we get a say in some things that we want to see? Because this neighborhood's really trying to kind of come up in our image, not go down. And I don't really think that your plan, as far as how it looks, is aesthetically pleasing. It looks like little tiny cubes. And it looks like National, or Chula Vista's. And it's just really not meant for this neighborhood. We're, we're next to five schools on this. There's a liquor store across the street. If sobriety is not required, this doesn't fit here. My next question is, how long is the lease for?
Apparently, the lease is through 2028 with Caltrans.
So it's a two-year lease?
No, it's a three-year lease. And then we'll, there'll be some change in legislation that will either continue that or we'll have to renegotiate the lease with Caltrans at that time.
Okay. And then at the end of that lease or at the point where you decide this hasn't worked well or whatever possible thing comes before us where we have to close it down, you'd put it back to the original, just a grassy lawn?
It'll go back to its original state, yes.
Okay, good. So since no cars are allowed for the, the residents and no sobriety is required, that means that they're gonna leave the gate, go into the neighborhoods, do the drugs, come back. I got a problem with that. Okay, now here's what the public has asked me to ask. Well, I already addressed the liquor store and the five schools. We know that's not acceptable. Low barrier, no, thank you. Crime and safety of the residents in the area. What are we going to do as far as increasing sheriff patrol? We're, we're already an underserved, underfunded community. We don't have these resources. So what, what power do we have to say, hey, if you're going to do this in our community, we need a couple more sheriffs? We need, you know, we don't have a rec center. Can you open the rec center? Because we need a rec center for our youth that's in danger of being homeless. Can, can we negotiate anything like that? Do we have that right?
Okay, so we're gonna just go back to the guidelines. We are not heckling, we are not interrupting. We need to listen to the information. And there's so much opportunity again for everyone of you to make your point. All right, thank you.
So can we negotiate a more sheriff and maybe something to help us with our rec center or other community services? Because we're poor in that department.
And Councilmember Hridya, let me jump in. That is something that we're here tonight. So if there are suggestions you would like staff to address with the county on that, we would certainly do that. And county staff is here to hear that. So if your suggestion is we would like to have the staff to negotiate maybe additional sheriff in that area that works both the Spring Valley and Lemon Grove area, I could, I could work with the county staff to, to perhaps make that happen. But have those negotiations with them. So that's what we're here tonight is to give some feedback to the county staff to say, hey, if this is going to go in, because we don't really have a choice to say yes or no, what we can do is we would like to see some of these changes. And then that will be with county staff. And we're taking notes. And so that will be my marching orders to continue to negotiate with county staff.
Okay. So the answer to that, everybody in the crowd, is yes. We do have the right to say we want this and that. And hopefully, they listen. I did have a problem with the diagram where the entrance is. That's a really tricky spot to be coming in and out. It's not safe. There's an incline, it's blind. I, I don't see how that's a good spot for cars to come in and out. And honestly, on the other side of that property, it's not a good site either because it's got a little bit of a blind curb. So you may want to rethink where you've put that. And can we change it to what we were told in the beginning? That this was for homeless families? And specifically, I think we were even told that it was for like the 200 homeless children in the school district? Can, can we prioritize those people? And the 24-hour security, is that just like a rent-a-cop?
Jessica, can I do a point of order? Because I really want to hear the answer to that question. So can you go back a question and, and repeat that again?
Can we go back to, we were told originally that this was going to be for homeless families, specifically in our school district where we have 200 homeless children? Can we prioritize them first?
So this program will not be serving families. We, the county has not, not shared that before. So this program always intends to serve people that are 18 or older, like our, you know, youth, our seniors, our single women and people like that. We have another program that serves families. So we intend to continue using that program for families that is better suited for that type of population.
And are you targeting our youth in the homeless population in our schools then? For that program?
Councilmember, we have met with the school superintendent and offered our services. So that invitation is open for any referral to come our way, for sure.
Okay, great. Thank you so much. And I think that's it for now, but I'm sure I'll think of more. Thank you.
Councilmember Faiye?
Yes, thank you guys for being here. I got a I'd like for the, just for the county, if you can, if you can define what the word emergency means. Because if this is a 2018 state of emergency, we're seven years late.
Yeah, we are.
No, 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 no. No, we're, we're seven years late and we're seven years behind. So that means for seven years, we've had, we've had overdoses, we've had deaths, we did all these things because we're dragging our feet because we're in a state of emergency. So what I would like to know, what is the definition of emergency to the county of San Diego? Because the thing is, there's plenty of, there's plenty of nonprofit organizations who are boots to the ground. We have people boots to the ground in our city who are, who are, who are grinding every single day of the week to make sure that we take care of our unhoused and homeless, homelessness problem in our city. So my definition, if, if we're going to, if you're going to come here and, and you're going to come and you're going to help our city and help the local communities around us, I think we need to change the definition of what emergency means. Because emergency means, hey, it's like tomorrow. That's, that's to me, that's how I understand emergency. So I, so that's my first question. My second question. Okay.
Yeah, I did the same thing.
I'm sorry.
We, we certainly agree and sympathize with you. The homelessness has risen in the, in our region and in our state significantly in the recent years. So absolutely, it is a, it's a state of emergency. County has been working for many years and operates different programs that have been in operational for, for, since 2019 to offer emergency housing to people experiencing homelessness. This is another option that creates a non-congregate interim housing to offer as an additional option for those who may not be a fit for our other programs.
Thank you very much for that. Mr. Christman, if, if, if you could, in your presentation, sir, you said that you solicited public feedback. Can you define what the, what public feedback means? Because did you solicit information from the gas station owner across the street or from the local businesses locally across, right across the street, who are affected by the amount of just homelessness that, that, that brings into their businesses? Did you solicit information from them and from the neighbors who are, who are going to be neighboring this, this Troy Street project?
Councilmember, I personally attended a public webinar in November. I also attended a small group meeting in November as well to present the concept design. I did not do the door knocking, but I believe Deanna and her team did do the outreach to the neighboring properties.
No, guys, guys, chill.
No, no, we're not calling out like that. Please be respectful.
Guys, chill. We're all, we're, hey, we're all trying to get the information. So just chill. Listen, so, Leona, if you, if you, if you could answer me just this one question. So did the surrounding businesses know about the, about the Zoom meeting?
So information was shared in a flyer publicly for anyone to attend this webinar. So it was posted through, advertised to our social media and the teams were in the immediate neighborhood passing out the flyers.
Ms. Beck, can you also go back to the original question Mr. Faiye had? And what outreach did your team do to the surrounding properties and the businesses? Your, your answer sort of got shadowed down.
Yes, the team was, team did foot outreach in the immediate area of the, of the neighbor, of the site and advertised the Zoom webinar that was happening in November. We also did a community event on November 16th that was held here in the City of Lemon Grove. And we, at that time, provided information and solicited information on the design as well.
Okay, thank you. With, with all due respect, what are the measurables of success for this program? Like here, let me give you, let me give you three points that I'm thinking about. Well, how do you measure the percentages of the people who find permanent and affordable housing? Because this is supposed to be a transition from point A to point B in, in hopes that they'll, they'll be contributors to, to society. So one, how do we, do they find permanent and affordable housing? One. Two, do they become clean and sober? Okay? And then three, do they find employment? So how do we measure the success of this program? Because, and then, yeah, just if you can answer that for me, that'd be great.
Great question. Thank you for that question. So we measured the success by connecting, the ultimate goal, bar none, is connecting people to permanent housing. That's, that's always the goal for all our other programs, too. And those that you described, getting clean and sober, getting a job or, you know, reconnecting with family supports and other things, stabilizing, those are all building blocks to that permanency.
Okay, thank you. And then if you could, if you could give me an example of some cities that are doing a program, such as like the Troy Street Project, can you give me some examples of the cities that are doing it well? And, and then how, the model that the county, the model that is, that is being introduced to us, where is that from? And, and how do you, how is the model of success? Like, because we, I mean, here's the deal. None of us are opposed to helping the unhoused and homeless. But we do want a successful program. So how do we measure that success? So how do we measure that success? And if there are any other cities in the surrounding areas of Lemon Grove that are doing this kind of type of program well?
Yeah, thank you for that question as well. So we, we had, during our initial round of community engagement, people voiced strong support for non-congregate shelters. And at that time, there was few communities in Los Angeles and surrounding areas that were putting up these types of emergency housing programs. So we went and visited. And we know that each, each and every program we talked to says that communities are safer when people are housed, and that includes interim housing. And so all of these communities that had these types of projects had seen a reduced number of encampments, of incidents in the nearby areas and communities, and they were able to successfully navigate a lot of people into permanent housing. Locally, the county actually contributed funding to the Chula Vista project for their sleeping cabins. So there is a local project that's about same size as this one will be, of about 60 cabins, that's currently operating in Chula Vista and is connecting people to that permanent housing as well, similar program.
Bringing that you mentioned Chula Vista, is there a way you can give me numbers? I'm a numbers guy. So if you can give me numbers of like the success stories of people coming out of the Chula Vista program?
We would be very happy to connect you with their homelessness manager who can provide that information. We connect with her all the time and have regular meetings, so we could get that information for you.
Okay. And then I guess my last question is, in this here, it says the program includes case management, housing navigation to permanent housing options, access to behavioral health, employment services, credit repair, and many other supportive services. My concern, my concern for our city and my concern for our unhoused and homeless is that if we don't have a handle of how we can handle, can help them become drug-free and work them off the stuff that they're enslaved to, if we can't do that, then how do, then how do we measure that success? Because it seems like right now, it's like, if we can't, if we can't say, hey, if there is no boundary, or there is no stipulation, if someone goes and does drugs outside three blocks away, and they come back and they're under the influence, but yet they're part of the program, so we have to let them in, to me, that's not a measure of success. We're just, we're actually just enabling them.
So council member, we've heard, we heard very similar concerns with our other two programs, the Safe Parking Programs, exact same concerns. And we have had no incidence of any of that happening. These programs have been operational since 2022. And again, happy to provide data from the sheriff's office to support that if you're interested, but we have not seen any congregation, or loitering, or drug use in and around these sites. So we hope to operate this site in the same way.
All right, thank you. No further questions. Thank you.
Mayor Protem Mendoza?
I'm going to start with a little background, since I was actually on the city council last summer when we first learned about this program. In March of 2024, I read in the newspaper that the county was receiving 150 tiny sleeping cabins along with a $10 million grant, and was putting them on a lot near the freeway in Spring Valley. I immediately thought we could use maybe a dozen of these units in Lemon Grove for our homeless individuals. At that time, the city's enforcement of its camping, we, the city has an anti-camping ordinance. Not a lot of people realize that, but we do, we do have one. It's on the books. However, our enforcement of that camping ordinance was limited by a lawsuit that had been filed in Boise, Idaho. With few exceptions, we could not move encampments off city property unless we had a shelter bed in Lemon Grove to move people to. I saw these little cabins as an opportunity to help people who are homeless, but also as a means to help clear encampments in our city, which is a big concern of our residents, is clearing encampments. Monica Montgomery Stepp had recently been elected. I knew her from serving on the Sandag and the MTS boards for many years. In fact, I had endorsed her when she ran for supervisor, and I actually
Okay, I'm so sorry. Can I please just stop you there? That is unacceptable. When everyone is quiet, we can all hear. If you're booing and shouting out "Trey's Red" and all the insults, it's just not constructive. Please, don't do that. Thank you.
Ma'am, you're annoying.
Again, if you can stop calling out, you can actually listen to what's happening. That's a distraction. We just don't need that.
Councilmember Mendoza, do you want to proceed?
Just making sure everyone's done. When I was first elected to office in 2014, I was advised of the importance of establishing a good relationship with your county supervisor, whether you agree with them or not. The county has access to way more funding than our small city does. And we were entitled to receive some of that, but we need to ask. So I called Monica Montgomery's office, and I asked if I could meet with her and talk about the homeless situation in Lemon Grove. She told me that she was meeting with Councilmember Snow the following subject, the following week, on the same subject. So I asked if I could join that meeting, and they both agreed. We met Supervisor Montgomery and one of her aides on April 26th at Elevated Coffee here in Lemon Grove. Not behind closed doors. We talked about the homeless crisis here in Lemon Grove. Because of our city's small size, we did not have, and still do not have, access to state funding for the homeless that the county and larger cities had access to. I asked for about 1012 of the sleeping cabins and a small portion of the funding. The county required free or cheap sites to place the cabins. I suggested a parking area behind the county's social services site on Broadway, an MTS parking lot on Massachusetts and San Altos, an area behind the Burger King on the west end of Broadway, some large unused parking lots that are owned by local churches, and we mentioned the Sweetwater and Troy Street site. The county did not have the funds to purchase a large area of land, and neither did Lemon Grove. Monica and her aide left with a promise to help, but no specifics on how or when. They toured the sites we had suggested, and they drove by some of the largest, larger homeless encampments here in Lemon Grove. As they were leaving, we ran into some Lemon Grove residents. And they might even be here in this room. They're our, they were our neighbors. We introduced them to Monica and excitedly told them that the county was here to help us with our homeless situation. We left and stressed that wherever we ended up citing these cabins, we needed to have community and buy-in. Lemon Grove did not have the staff or funds to do community outreach. We were promised that the county would do the necessary outreach. I never met or spoke with Monica Montgomery again after, about our homeless crisis after this in Lemon Grove. There was never any collusion or backdoor deals or promises made. My intentions were simply to help our homeless already here in our community and to strengthen our ability to enforce our camping ordinance, our anti-camping ordinance. In June, I read that the county had decided not to place the cabins in Spring Valley and that the state was taking back the grant and the cabins. I was very disappointed. Even though the Boise decision had been overturned, I still wanted to help some of our homeless population here in Lemon Grove. Next, I heard that the county was going to put 70, 60 to 70 sleeping cabin, cabins on the Sweetwater and Troy site in Lemon Grove. The county voted unanimously on this matter in mid-July. The county held a very contentious town hall meeting in Lemon Grove a few days later. I personally haven't received updates from the county on our, on this project. Our city manager has been attending meetings with the county and providing us with updates. When she first showed me the county plans, my immediate response was, it looked to me like there were too many of these cabins on one site, and they were concentrating too many people in one area. Although you did clear up one of those matters, I was concerned that there were going to be two people in every cabin, and that would be 140 people, and I didn't even know how that would be possible. So most of the questions I've had have been answered by my colleagues or answered by your presentation, and I appreciate that. A few more things, just some things I'd like to, you know, suggest to my, to have you guys hear as suggestions, but also my council colleagues and the community, which I am looking forward to hearing my community's ideas. I still think that fewer cabins on this site, I would like to see fewer. It's, you're really concentrating a lot of people in a very small area. And if you've, if you've already ordered all these cabins, then we could distribute them around Lemon Grove at local church, local church sites, like they have in other areas. I think that this I do think the site needs more parking spaces, and I hate to see that you're restricting this to people who don't have cars. There are a lot of homeless in the East County, Lemon Grove in the East County, who do have cars. And you need bike racks. There's, if they don't have a car, they're riding a bike. You said there would be a dog area. Let's prioritize our seniors, our veterans, our disabled. They're living on very low restricted incomes, and they just can't afford housing on, I mean, I think SSI is what, $1,200 a month? How are you going to have a place to live on $1,200 a month? That's why we see so many seniors and disabled people out on our streets. Single parents with children, a cabin could accommodate a single parent and a child. And, you know, I will leave it up to our city manager to negotiate, but I would suggest at least half be reserved for Lemon Grove and Spring Valley residents, homeless residents. You've mentioned the sidewalks, but we also need some better crosswalks at all the corners. There is a bus stop in, right in front, so that needs to be, you know, people are going to have to cross the street to take the bus the other way. Let's see. I like that you have a storage area, because that's often an impediment for people to accept housing, is these cabins are small, and people have, they have stuff, and they need a place to put their stuff. Smoking, a lot of people who are homeless smoke. And you, you know, just be mindful of where you have a smoking area when you're building this. And a curfew. You know, that's something else to consider. I think that there should be a curfew. So I'm basing a lot of this on my own personal experience of, for 30 years, I've been volunteering with a group called Interfaith Shelter Network. And we, with other churches in San Diego, there's, I think, there's five, what they call five rotations, East County, Central, North, South. And each rotation houses up to 12 homeless individuals, men, women, children, elderly, disabled, for three to four months. And my church has been doing this for 30 years. I've been volunteering for 20, 25 years, and for the last probably 12 years, I've actually been in charge of my program. Interfaith Shelter uses the county to, for social services. They contract with the county for our social services. It's very successful, this program is very successful. And I'm, I'd like to see you mirror it as much as possible. Just in this, my little East County rotation, 12 people, we've, we've already housed three men and one, one woman. And, and we, and then, and people just coming, just keep coming in. We've got, right now, we have seven women ranging from 22 years old to my age, 60, 68 years old. We have two young guys, an 18-year-old and a 30-year-old, and three children, a baby, a four-year-old, and a five-year-old. This is the face of homelessness, people. The, this, these are people who have been living on the street, and in November, they found shelter. And every two weeks, they move from one church to another church. And these, they're not all drug addicts, they're not all alcoholics. If you've actually worked with, with the homeless population, you would, you would know this. And I have, and I have seen success, and I know it can be successful. But I'm, I'm not 100% in favor with the plans for the site. I think, I would like to, I would like, at the end of the day, for our council to come together and, you know, we've asked some excellent questions and makes, maybe some suggestions that we can negotiate with, with the county. So thank you very much, and thank you for, for being here to do, to present this.
Thank you for that very comprehensive and thoughtful summary. That was wonderful. And thank you for, for your service with the Interfaith Shelter Network. That's wonderful. Thank you.
I'm just checking, just checking the time. So when, similarly, I want to give a little background to my efforts in this. When I was originally campaigning to be elected to the city council, one of the reasons I did so is because working families are really struggling, and it is difficult to find people with the expertise in the area, with policy experience and everything else to get the job done. And so I'd spent my years in the trenches, almost two decades now, working to make sure that working families can make it during tough economic times. So I came with experience, and I know that there's not one solution. So this is just a part of what we can do to help alleviate housing and homelessness issues in our community. Taking a multifaceted approach. First is housing stabilization for people who are currently experiencing homelessness. This week, we were able to announce another grant with the Regional Task Force on Homelessness. One of the loudest things that we heard when we were initially discussing the Troy Street Project was, what about the people who are really struggling with mental health issues, really struggling with drug addiction? The Troy Street Project is obviously not for them, and so what are we going to do with those? So we made a lot of progress with the Regional Task Force on Homelessness, and I started that as soon as I got into office. Because we don't have the money in Lemon Grove or the resources to do this ourselves. So we have to build partnerships, and we have to work on this. We just got an $8.4 million grant to service the people who are behind Food for Less that are on North Avenue. That is incredible. Now we have another opportunity for the people who are in a, in a more healthy situation to voluntarily enter into the Troy Street Program. But my intention was to help those people who need the transitional housing. So when I was advocating for this, and to this day, I am still advocating for this, is to have working families there. I'm really discouraged that the county shut that down. I did not think that that would come out of the county today, so I'm kind of disappointed with that. We have, just as Mayor Protem Mendoza said, the new face of homelessness is no longer just people who are struggling with drug addiction or mental health issues. It is two working parents with two children who can't afford $3,000 a month for rent. We've got the Kelvin who just opened its market rent. To get a two-bedroom apartment there, you're looking at upwards of $3,000 a month. I can't afford that. And most people And most people can't on a working, most people here in Lemon Grove has a $60,000 a year salary. So I'm still fighting to make sure that we can get working families and those 200 kids that don't know where they're gonna sleep at night into this project. I think this project is perfect for them. Because of my experience in the housing industry, most families are able to meet the metrics that Councilmember Faiyai is suggesting, that if we want measurable outcomes, if we want people to land in permanent housing, that population of people is most likely to have success through this program. So I'm, that will be part of what I'm asking for in this. In addition, we also were able to land the San Diego County Pilot Program in Lemon Grove. Now, when I first got into office, I was like, I know we don't have money, but we have to solve homelessness. Like, I, I can't sleep at night if I know that somebody else is out there who is, who is not able to survive in this, in this weather that we've been having. So what are we gonna do to end homelessness? And so one of the things that we were able to do, out of all the 16 cities that do not get an ounce of the funding that comes through the Continuum of Care, that's all the state funding, we were the only city selected for that. We were the only city selected for the Regional Task Force on Homelessness. Why? Because you got a lot of people up here, just as the Councilmember Faiyai said, who wanna make sure that people have this, have opportunities.
Please. Okay, so here's the deal. Here's the deal. I'm giving this to all of you, I understand, because we're here constantly trying to help. Be respectful, treat everyone with kindness, do not boo or cheer. Please focus on the issue and not the individual, the person. And you also find these guidelines dotted around the room, if you look to your left or right, there are numerous signs that guide us over there. The thing is, if we have disruptions, we can't hear and we're wasting time. We want you to have a say. If we get time 30, and we've had to stop these meetings 20 times, you're not all gonna get a say. So please, just, just wait for our answer. Thank you. There's snow, do you like to put anything in the air?
Thank you. So in addition to the county outreach program, we also have the encampment cleanups that the public works teams have been doing. So we have, so that's one of the prongs. The next one is eviction diversion. So we're looking at opportunities to keep people in their houses. The first thing that you do when your house starts flooding is you turn off the water. So we gotta turn off the fountain of people newly becoming homeless, and so we are working on measures to do that. That includes, we set aside $250,000 to help us with eviction diversion. We, we are, I'm also looking at habitability repair funding to make sure that the houses that are in disrepair help those landlords out to get the, get the properties back up to where they need to be. And we're also looking at rent stabilization measures. And then the other one is a path to homeownership. The only way to lock in your rent is if you own your own home. And so we are looking for ways to get people into starter homes. So we're looking at solutions all up and down the economic path, but making sure that people stay housed, that is the priority, and this is just a small fraction of what we're trying to do to accomplish that. So on, for my questions, I'm, just have a couple of follow-up questions. We have, just, I wanna lay your fears that we're not gonna have time to hear you all. Right now, we have 33, excuse me, we have 33 speaker slips, and, and with the time, we will be able to hear all of you, and I will be able to give you all three minutes. So just know that you are getting your opportunity to be heard. I'm carefully calculating it. I checked the time to make sure that we have all the information out there, but that you get your turn too. So one of the things I've wanted to follow up with was on Councilmember Faiyai's point, regarding the, I'm sorry, it was Councilmember Heridia, for the reasons behind excluding families from this project, why aren't we including working families? And where, where was the site that you were referring to that we can send working families to?
Hi, Mayor Snow, thank you for your question. So we have a program that's called Regional Homeless Assistance Program that's been operational for many years now, and that program leverages local hotels as emergency housing, and we, we leverage that program to serve families. These sites, based on our research and what we've seen at other sites, are more conducive to serving individuals and not families with children. So we continue to operate our other program who serves our families. We also serve families at our safe parking programs, as we see many families that are homeless in their vehicles. So based on our data and, and the population that we serve, this program will serve some of the populations that your, your council members describe, such as youth, transitional age youth, veterans, seniors, single women, and those types of families, and those types of individuals, sorry.
Okay. So because I work in the, in this industry on trying to keep people housed, number one, I know that housing, like, going and popping around hotel to hotel is not good for children to be bounced around like that. Number two, I don't know how other people sleep in their car. I got a minivan, and I've tried to sleep in my minivan, and it's no fun, especially if I have children there. And so I don't understand why the county believes that safe parking and sleeping in a car is preferable to a warm cozy bed in a place with a roof. Can you explain, please explain the logic behind that?
So families are given an option if they would like to enter into our hotel voucher program. They don't have to move. Recent state legislation allows them to stay in the same hotel until they achieve permanent housing. If they wanna prefer to stay in their car until they're moved into permanent housing, then that's, that's based on their preference.
So my experience with trying to get people who I'm helping, who are going through evictions to get into these programs, the housing vouchers last, there, there's a finite number and a finite number of days, and in this, in what was approved by the county, there's still included housing vouchers there. And so my experience is, is that's not adequate, and that is not happening, and why can't we give working families the option to stay in a shelter like this instead of going to a hotel where they may or may not have vouchers?
So we appreciate your, your feedback, and our hotel Regional Homeless Assistance Program is, is not a voucher program. It's actually an emergency housing program that offers all the wraparound support. Families can stay, generally, they stay up to about six months, and then we do have some rental subsidies that they receive as part of that exit to permanent housing.
Okay, and to date, I have never had a client successfully do that in 20 years of, of doing my work. So I'm just, just so you know, like, I am going to be continually hammering on this for this to be for working families. We need solutions for people who live in this area, and it only makes sense if we have a school close by to have children that can go to that school. So I, I think that that is a really important point to make here. The other issue is public safety. So I've done my homework on this, my due diligence, I looked at different models, I've looked at safe parking sites for our community, I've looked at different things, and by far, the best results come from temporary shelters. And the evidence showed that where there was transitional housing like this, there was a 40% reduction in police, medical, and psychiatric costs related to the homeless population. So I, I am in favor of this, but I, I just need to, because we have the other grant that's helping with some of the people who have more severe issues, all the more reason to put working families into this, into this site. So I'm going to leave it here now for comments. We'll have the opportunity to do more deliberation and provide recommendations as a council at the end, but now we'll turn the time over for public comment. Right now, we are at 7:18, so we have time to be able to give each person three minutes. So, but if, if you feel like your questions have been answered, then you can say I'm for or against, but just be mindful of everyone's time. If you can make it brief, please do so, but please speak your mind, and, and we are here to listen. Our role today is more in a listening capacity, and we'll, we'll go from there. So I will now turn the time, or we'll, we'll move to the public comment section. So as a reminder, because this is a special meeting, public comment is limited to the items listed on the agenda. Speakers must confine their remarks to the agenda items under discussion. We ask that comments remain respectful and relevant to the agenda item. Due to the number of public comments, again, we, we only had 33 comments, speaker slips, so I believe that we have time to give each person three minutes. So I'll give the time back over to our facilitator, Ms. Strong, and she will, and she will take it from there.
Madam Mayor, I'm so sorry, Ms. Strong. Madam Mayor, we did get some late submissions, so we have 36 speaker slips.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Ms. Snow, thank you all the council members for that. Okay, so it's what you've been waiting for, your time to be heard, and so, questions and comments will address once they've been asked, but please, just to remind, it's not a debate format, so please move back before. And Mark, please call on the speakers.
Yes, so when your name is called, please approach the mic stand located in the center aisle near the fourth row. You will have three minutes to provide your public input. When you hear the first beep, it signals that you have one minute remaining. Please direct your comments to the council. I will now call on the first speaker, Vice Mayor Patricia Dillard.
And Madam Mayor, may, as Ms. Dillard is coming up to the podium, we've got two team members, city team members on the sides codifying your comments. They're gonna be summarizing them, but that will be then transferred to the county staff, so they have a formal record of what, what was said tonight. I'm sorry, Ms. Dillard, your time.
Yes, thank you. There was a lot of comments. Can you hear me?
Speak directly into the mic and see if that works.
Hello? Okay, there we go. Thank you for your comments. Thank you for the presentation. There was a lot of information shared today, more than even I knew. But the first thing I want to say is congratulations to the new elected officials. I haven't met all of you, but I did want to extend my congratulations to you. This is a very complicated and difficult issue, and I wanted to get a chance to share what La Mesa is doing, and we are all connected. This is not a bubble for La Mesa or a bubble for Lemon Grove. This is an issue that is across the county and across the state. One of the things that we have going on in La Mesa, and I'll tell you why I'm telling you about it in a minute, is called the HOME program. It's, stands for Homeless Outreach Mobility Engagement. We work with several nonprofit organizations which happen to be in this room, there's some, but we started with a team about three years ago, and we just had one person. And the pressure was on to take the relief off of our police officers, who, by the way, are trained and hired to be police officers, and not really, didn't really understand, did the best they could with homelessness, but it was taking a lot of time away from our other public safety issues. And so we started with one gentleman, that was three years ago, we now have four, and they work specifically and are hired and trained to do this job. Yes, the city does pay for this through the police department, but it is working extremely well, and yes, we are focused on families especially. We have families that are living in their cars, but they actually have jobs. They're going over to Sharp Hospital, for instance, and they're working all day, sometimes 12 hours a day, and then they come back to their cars because they can't afford to live in anywhere unless they go across the border down to Mexico, Tijuana, whatever. But my point is, is to share that some of these people come out of Lemon Grove, some of these people that come, that are in Lemon Grove, come out of La Mesa, and on and on. We have a trolley system. People jump on and off. I am a board member of the Metropolitan Transit System, and I also serve on the Public Safety Commission, and
Ms. Dillard, your time is up.
Oh, okay, well, thank you for all of your comments. I appreciate the feedback. Thank you.
Next, we have Griselda Ugarte, and the next two speakers after that is Steve Goble and Brenda Hammond.
This is directed to the entire panel, county, city, and the project, the whole project. Please tell us, what do we need, what do we, the residents of Lemon Grove, need to do to help you understand that we do not want those cabins in Lemon Grove? We, the people, don't want them in Lemon Grove. Thank you. Waiting for an answer.
I, I'll just go ahead and, because this is a little different than, this is an agendized item, and so one of the things that, I, I understand that there is a population of people here in Lemon Grove who don't want these cabins. There's also a population of people who absolutely desperately need these cabins. And so we, as councilmembers, sit here and make tough decisions, but this, there's a population of people who really need help, and this is a big help to them. And so that's, that's one of the reasons why we're, we're taking, we're taking input. We want to have the best possible scenario here, but we hear you loud and clear. We know that there's a population of people here that want that, but we also have to listen to the people who need it. Thank you. Mr. Goble, and for the people with signs, I, like, you can have your signs, but just don't block other people's views. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Steve Goble. I'm a council member in the city of El Cajon, and I'm here at the invitation of one of your council members to share about our tiny home project, not to debate your project. I'll just give you some data about our project so that you have the whole community and the council has data to consider. We've had six tiny home cabins in El Cajon since 2022, a little over two years now. In those two years, 42 women have gone through those six cabins, so you can see we have quite a bit of turnover, meaning they are successful. 78% have gone on to more permanent housing. This is on a private site, Meridian Baptist Church, and we have put through 32 women and 10 children through that. Currently, they are full right now. This is a partnership between the city, Amicus, who is the builder, Meridian's a site host and crisis house who provides ongoing counseling. In those two years, there have been no calls for police service, no complaints from neighbors, and no complaints from the elementary school across the street. There's 24-hour security, so why does this work with 78%? In a simple word, screening. It is all about the screening. Remember, this is all women and women with children. They are background-checked, they're selected for compatibility with neighborhood uses. They must sign a contract agreeing to meet with counselors weekly, or they are exited from the program. Some people have exited from the program because they wanted a handout and not a handup. This is not a forever home. They get 90 days, it's extendable to 180 days. As you can see, we put through 42 through six cabins, it's an average of seven people per cabin over two years, which is a pretty good rate. This is a woman and women children facility only. It has taken on an organic life of itself. One resident, she lost her children to CPS as a result of her problems. Another resident said, "I will help you," and she got her children back because of the, the organic nature of this particular, some success stories. One woman got a job as an MTS bus driver, another was a homeless college student who got a scholarship. She'll be studying in Africa. A car was donated to help them get to medical and job appointments in case they need to leave the services. The success of the program is due to the women themselves. They've done the hard work, their lives and their children are changed forever. They were screened, they were screened, that is the key, and they committed to the rules, to adhere to the rules. If they broke the rules, they're out. And they've worked hard. They've worked for their success, 42 in and out of six cabins in two years. That is a data point for all you to consider. Thank you.
I appreciate that, and, and And to our Vice Mayor from La Mesa and to the City of El Cajon, Councilmember Goble, we have been the bad neighbors. We don't have shelters, and we don't have resources, and we send our people who are unhoused out to their communities to get services. And so, that's, I really appreciate what El Cajon has done to take the laboring oar on this and for setting the example. Appreciate that. Okay, can you call the next speakers?
Yes, so next we have Brenda Hammond. After Brenda Hammond makes her public comment, the following speakers are Jack Shu and Michelle Krug. And then, when you have one minute remaining on the timer, I'll go ahead and just wave this one-minute sign. All right, Brenda? You may begin.
I'm short. Hi, I'm going to read the same thing I read at the last city council meeting with a little tweak. I have been thinking about the potential tiny homes the county wants to put at Troy and Sweetwater Road. I have been driving by there often to visit my mother. I stop a few times to check out the potential area. The excuse of being too close to schools is ridiculous. There's condos and townhomes above that property in question, and there's, that's a barrier between the tiny home property and the school, not to mention the 125 freeway. You know, well, I don't know if you know or have paid attention to the new apartments and condos and townhomes being built all over the area. The rent and the mortgage is so expensive to subsidize rent payments, bedrooms are being pimped out by the hour. And I'm not talking Airbnb, baby. I'm talking about by the hour, know what I mean? Most recently, while I was house-sitting in a nearby condo complex, strangers actually walked up to me and asked me how much I would charge by the hour for a bedroom, and would that include a shower? So those people worried about government-controlled tiny homes in their neighborhoods, look around you and pay attention to what, to more of your own, to more than your own paranoia. These people had a chance to hear the details at a previous meeting and did not listen to the presentation. If those people have that much time on their hands to complain about something they don't know about, they should use that time to check out the other cities and see that the tiny home program is working. First stop, El Cajon. Thank you, Councilmember Goble. After reading this to you again, I am just a little disappointed tonight because I, seems to me that some of the rules and guidelines have been changed. And so, I'm just hoping, thank you, I'm just hoping that it can get back to what it was originally supposed to be, like some of you council members have said, and even the mayor. Thank you.
Jack Shu. Following Jack Shu, we have Michelle Krug.
Good evening. My name is Jack Shu. For many years, I've been involved with the Homeless Count. It's a county-wide, nationwide count of the homeless population. In this last year, I was assigned census tracts not less than half a mile from here, much of Spring Valley. And it reinforced my thoughts on who the homeless population is. And as was mentioned earlier, they are a many-journeyed. But they're all people. They are neighbors. They have all kinds of backgrounds and many kinds of needs. They need help, and I think that's our job, our job as human beings. And I think that's what's important. We should be human beings first, and one of the jobs that I think human beings have is to help one another. And that's pretty clear that each jurisdiction, city, county, take its part in doing that. The homeless population is not going to go away. Unfortunately, it may even be growing. And someone mentioned, "Well, you know, if you don't allow drugs on the site, they may take drugs elsewhere." Well, right now, they may be taking drugs everywhere. At least at this site, we can provide services. At least at this site, we can provide a safe location. We need one in East County. That's our job. That's our job as citizens. As citizens of this community, we have to move forward. Thank you to the county for moving forward. The residents are citizens, then you have to take care of our community, and these are members of our community. These are neighbors, and if you believe and have any faith, that's what we have to follow through. So thank you, City of Lemon Grove, for putting this forward and moving ahead with this process. I won't take any more time. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next, we have Michelle Krug.
Hi, I couldn't agree more with what Jack Shu said. I thank him for his words. Clearly, I'll address the elephant in the room. I didn't get the memo about the dress code. I am one hundred percent in favor of this. I came off the strike line for Kaiser Mental Health Professionals, and their colors for their union are red and white, National Union of Healthcare Workers. So that's, just to address that. I strongly feel that we have to start somewhere with addressing issues and having wraparound services. There's nothing that's more critical than actually providing housing to let people begin to repair their lives. So around the seniors in particular, I am a member of the California Alliance of Retired Americans, and we really know how many seniors are becoming homeless. In fact, it's the fastest-growing group of people becoming homeless because they lose their, the pension stays the same. And so, you know, as things go up, they're losing housing. I just think that we need to do this address. If we can get, you know, a single parent and her child, that's great. Obviously, tiny homes are not exactly built for that, but I am really glad that the county has chosen Lemon Grove to start this process. Thank you.
Mayor Snow, I will now turn it over to Aaron to answer his questions received. Following his response or responses, I will continue with the public comment period of this agenda.
There it is. Good evening, everyone. My name is Aaron. You may notice that there was a table at the back where people could submit questions. I'm going to read questions intermittently this evening. So this first question is from Rachel. It says, "Why all the urgency to make sure Lemon Grove gets these shelters and not Bankers Hill? Who is getting the contracts?"
So as Councilmember Fai pointed out, this has been an emergency for a long time, and we're not sitting on our hands anymore with this. We're going to make sure, and we're going to be in the fight to get the resources, and the resources we need are housing and services. And so, when we talk about why is there an urgency, it's because we have about three hundred people out there sleeping, and it's not safe for us as a community to allow that to continue. The status quo isn't okay. There's, the contracts have been open. If you want to look and see what the contracts are, you can reach out to the county to see about what those contracts are. They're out in the open. There is not one of us up here that has a financial interest in this, just an interest in our hearts to do the right thing.
Mayor Snow, can I also ask the county team to address why they chose this site opposed to the City of San Diego site?
Yes, Mayor Snow, in general, the county's charter is to service the eastern portion of the county and the unincorporated areas, and what you're referring to is within the City of San Diego's jurisdiction.
Next, we have Amy Reichert. After Amy's public comment, the next two speakers are Stephanie Brizlin and Matt Kostrowski.
Lemon Grove, I am so sorry that you have been lied to and that you have gotten the shaft. Even this process tonight has been manipulated. There have been city council members that got to speak first from other cities and other activists, so I'm just wondering if their speaker slips were put in, in front of other speakers, because I don't think they were here earlier. So with that in mind, I do want to correct some of the things that have been said here tonight. This is a Facebook post right here, and it is from your mayor, Allison Snow. She says, "The tiny homes are to help working families and seniors struggling with the loss of housing. You have known since the beginning that these cabins can only accommodate two people. From the start, Mayor Snow, you used talking points, saying that these were going to be for a man and a woman and their two children. This is not habitable for a family of four, and you know it." Now, there is another project that happened in this county. It was happening in Carlsbad, and it was called Windsor Park. And what happened there was, the residents were told that that housing would be for veterans. Instead, it has turned into a hellscape. They were lied to. They got the bait and switch, and since its inception in 2022, there have been seven-hundred-and-sixty-two service calls to the facility from the police. Comparing this project to El Cajon is disingenuous. That's on private property, and it is six cabins. This is seventy on public land, run by Caltrans and the county, which, by the way, the county is broke. The county is facing a one-hundred-and-thirty-eight-million-dollar deficit. We were in a surplus a couple of years ago. Forget about the state, billions in debt, and thanks to DOGE, there's not going to be any federal grants coming anytime soon. So, I do want to correct one thing that Councilmember Jennifer Mendoza said. To your point, you said that had these tiny cabins existed just a few years ago, then they would have been able to enforce the camping ban. But this is not a shelter. This is temporary housing, so this would not qualify under that. Furthermore, the case that you stated, Martin versus the City of Boise, it's been overturned.
Amy, your time is up.
So now camping on private property is allowed.
Amy, your time is up. I will now call on Stephanie Brizlin.
Thank you. Lemon Grove, stand strong.
Following Stephanie's comments, Matt Kostrowski.
Real briefly, I'm going to address some of the items that Ms. Reichert brought up. Number one, I have always asked and requested, please, I'm waiting. Again, this is, the whole point of having this is to have the opportunity for a back-and-forth to actually address your issues and not just sit here and stare.
I just want to say thank you, and it's kind of tough to follow Amy. That was-
What's your name?
My name's Stephanie, and just to clarify, I am a Lemon Grove resident, and I have been for a long time. And it's kind of hard to follow Amy. Thank you so much, Amy, and this is my first time, so I'm a little nervous, and I'm sorry that that shows. But my seven-year-old daughter, last week, stood in front of her school, in front of a room of people, and spoke, and so she inspired me to do this because I care about this. And that's why I'm here, is because of her and everybody else's children who are impacted by this. Having this location so close to the schools and our communities and our families, our family, community. And I have a unique perspective because I work with people with substance use issues. I help people find their freedom from substances. And part of this is, before I work with somebody, I make sure that they're ready for it. I believe that they can change, but they have to know that they're ready for change, and they have to feel purpose in their lives. And without those two things, I won't work with somebody because I know that it's not their time to do that. And so, what I'm asking is for more standards and more review of how this goes into effect of people who are really, need help, and who are ready and willing to receive it, because I do believe that we, as people, should take care of each other. And I'm not convinced that this is the right way because this was done in a way that was undemocratic. It has not involved any of our opinion and feedback. That's great that you got feedback on how it looks, but you didn't get any impact or feedback from us. And that's a way for government to overstep their reach by declaring, by declaring state of emergencies. What of our other rights can be taken away because of declarations of emergencies? This is a community problem and a community thing that needs to be addressed with us, with these people who are all here, who all care very much. This is not for politicians to force upon us. Thank you.
Next, next, we have Matt Kostrowski, and the next two speakers will be Lucas Spears and Ricky Nunez.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council meetings. Matt Kostrowski, I'm with Aspen Local 127. I represent the public works folks here for the City of Lemon Grove. I want to speak out for our members. They're the ones who maintain the facilities here, the parks, the infrastructure, and do other skilled jobs here for the city. While the day is typically addressed their day-to-day work, they also are tasked with dealing with the unsheltered population. I've listened from council meeting to council meeting, people have asking for a chance to voice and to be listened to and to hear from the county, and I appreciate that there is this forum for that, and hopefully there's, there's, there's input more forward. At this point, I think there's more details out there that we don't know yet. I'd like to say, though, is that for our folks, day in, day out, they're dealing with the unsheltered. They're, they're, they're dealing with their encampments, they're dealing with their items, they're dealing with the confrontation, sometimes the hostility that they have to deal with. And going forward, it has not been easy, and it's still not easy for our folks here at Lemon Grove that have to, that have to deal with the encampments. And so, they'll move them, and then they'll either return to the same place, or they'll move to another place. And so, it's almost like a whack-a-mole for them. It's very difficult, whether it's at the parks or the bridges and everything else here. And so, there needs to be a solution for Lemon Grove. Our workers here can't keep going like this. We want them to be able to do a lot of the work that the people in the community want done. And while we fight over the homeless and unsheltered, it doesn't address what do we do? And I'm hopeful, of wanting to see a solution so our folks can get to work, to do the real work of doing the roads and the sewers and everything else that they were, they thought they were originally going to do. But it just can't keep going, so hopefully there's a way to come together as a community and figure out what to do. But I just want to speak up for the workers here who are doing the job of every day going out. Instead of being attacked or dealing with needles or feces and everything else, and hopefully that they're, they're brought in. We're glad to be part of the equation, so if you want to know more about that, they'd be glad to talk more about those things, too. Thank you.
Lucas Spears. I will now turn it over to Ricky Nunez.
Hi, my name is Ricky Nunez. I'm an employee of the Public Works-
Hi, my name is Ricky Nunez. I'm an employee of the Public Works Department. I do want to state that I am in no way representing the city at this moment. I just want to give you guys a little bit of insight of what it is we do throughout our daily duties. The perspective of the unsheltered individuals that we have, you know, sometimes we go and we clean up homeless encampments. These encampments sometimes include human feces, makeshift weapons. Me, myself personally, have been into physical altercations with them. And sometimes it makes our job difficult to protect our safety. And this is in no way taking sides or anything. We just want to urge that something needs to be done. Me, myself, I've been a resident of Lemon Grove my entire life. I've lived here my entire life. I was born and raised here. I went to this middle school. So I went to the elementary school next door. So I love what I do. I love this city. My family has been here since the early 1900s. I have family members in the audience right now that probably didn't know I was here until I came up. We don't want to draw a line in the sand to divide us. Like Matt just said, as a Public Works employee that works, has the opportunity to work in a city that I've lived in for 39 years, I just want everyone to come together and just come up with a solution to help us do our jobs a little bit better, to take, it takes a lot of time for us to do these homeless. We educate them. Sometimes we educate them on simple things. Hey, you can't impede the sidewalk. A wheelchair has to go by. And that's time taken away from us paving roads, doing the potholes, and things like that. So please come to us with your ideas. We're more than welcome to answer any questions about that. As you guys see us in the community, please say hi to us. And yeah, thank you, guys, for your time.
Next, I'll turn it over to Erin. Next, we have Humbert Cabrera. Angelica Cabrera. Cabrera. Yeah, so Cabrera, C-A-B-R-E-R-A. Next, we have Leanna LaBarren.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Leanna LaBarren, and I am a former Lemon Grove City Councilmember. And I am going to tell everyone the truth because we are all being lied to tonight. First and foremost, the people of Lemon Grove do have a say. We are not powerless, and we are not voiceless. By different methods, like having people arrested and charged with alleged crimes, you, Madam Mayor, are trying to silence us in order to get this money grab constructed. You will not succeed. To council, you are being told there is nothing you can do about this project. And the truth is, that is an absolute lie. The council majority can do many things to side with the people and show good leadership. Here are two examples from a government standpoint of actions you can take. Mind you, I am no rookie to politics. I have many years of experience on council and prior. Lemon Grove is where I was born and raised. So when I share these words, I'm sharing this to empower the council majority. Because up there with all these snakes, you're being lied to. You're being made weak. And we need you to be strong on behalf of the city, the city and the people of the city. One, you can make or pass a resolution stating your fierce opposition to the Troy Street Project. It's very simple to do. And it only takes two of you to put it on the agenda. We now have a majority. Use that majority. Two, you can then vote to take legal action against the county and go into closed session to plan a strong legal fight against this project. This is nothing new to the city. We file lawsuits against the RENA allotment numbers that we were granted at one point. It can be done. You can use our tax dollars to fight against this project legally. When people tell you their intentions, believe them. These county officials to the side, they're telling us their intentions. And their intentions are to put people who are suffering from drug and alcohol addiction and severe mental health issues right next to a preschool. They don't need to keep repeating themselves, folks. They've made their intentions very clear. There should be no debate. Be our voice, council majority. Stand up for us. We are not voiceless. We have a say. Exercise your power to be good stewards of this community. Don't believe the lying mayor. She's a coward. Don't believe your lying city council colleague, Jennifer Mendoza. She's a snake. And that lady right there in the glasses, the city manager, she needs to be fired. Don't believe her or the city attorney. Thank you.
I will now turn it over to Erin to answer questions.
Hello again, everybody. This is kind of a question, but it's more of a comment. Please tell us, what do we, the residents of Lemon Grove, need to do to help you understand that we do not want those cabins in Lemon Grove? This is a county problem. I'm going to read one more while I'm here. It says, "A new preschool was just opened at walking distance to the homeless encampment. My own daughter is going to be attending this preschool. How do you think the parents feel about this? It's unsafe. We'd rather have funding go towards our children's education than housing the homeless from the county of San Diego." And that's by Carla Murphy.
I'm looking to my county partners, but I don't think, these are more comments than questions. Yes. And we will codify those. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Rachel Kelly. And the next two speakers following Rachel is Felene T. and Jasmine Mendoza.
Hi, I'm Rachel Kelly. My comment is, how can we trust you, County of San Diego, when you have been giving us the runaround about the demographics of who's going to be staying there here? First, it was family with childrens, then it was individuals or couples, and now it's low-barrier shelter. Shame on you, guys, and shame on you, Allison Snow, for speaking for us. We never approved this.
Our next speaker, we have Felene T. Following Felene T.'s comments, I have Jasmine Mendoza.
My name is Felina Tom. I've lived here 54 years, born and raised here in Lemon Grove. Shame on you, Snow, for selling us out. Shame on you for lowering our property values in Lemon Grove and not asking us for permission of this. That was really bad on your part because we're coming after you now.
Jasmine Mendoza. Following Jasmine's comments, the next two speakers are going to be Rachel Haye and Larry.
I'm sorry, I can't see the speaker. Please put your sign down.
Following Jasmine's comments, I have Rachel Haye and Larry B.
Okay, that is a tough crowd. Thanks for putting up a fight. So my first question is to Beck. You gave us a description of what a low-barrier shelter is. I would ask you to please look it up on Google, what the definition of a low-barrier shelter is, because it's most certainly not what you said it is. Okay? Low barrier is right there. No rules. Okay? Open to use drugs. You're telling us that drugs are not going to be allowed there, right? But they can use drugs outside of the facility. And there is no way you can control those people.
I'm sorry. We all want to get the full aspect of this, but somebody's waving a sign in the front. Can you please put the sign down? Stop it. And please give her more time.
Thank you. And I also think it's a complete fallacy when you say that you're going to get these people into housing three to six months. If that was a possibility, we wouldn't have these long waiting lists for Section 8 home, for low-income home. We would not be dealing with homelessness the way that we are. So please don't say that it's three to six months. That's what it's going to take to get them into stable housing. Complete lie. How can we trust you? That's my last question to you. Allison Snow, you know what? I actually appreciate all of you guys tonight because I heard everything I needed to hear from you guys. Allison Snow, I appreciate you wanting these shelters to go to families. I don't appreciate the fact that you spoke for us. I wish you would have reached out to your city first to let us know what the hell is going on in our city. And I think that's why you are facing so much backlash, because of the tactics and the way that you went about it. The city needs an apology from you. And I think that you need to mend that trust between yourself and these people here. Okay? Teresa? Jessica, thank you. Steve, thank you. Yadera, thank you. Ms. Mendoza, I like your idea about those cabins going into churches. It's a great idea. That's all I have to say.
Rachel Haye. Haye, H-A-Y-E. Okay, yeah, Rachel Hayes.
Hi, I'm Rachel Hayes with Lived Experience Advisors. And I was homeless for over 10 years. And I've been homeless in your town in Lemon Grove. I've been homeless in probably every homeless city in San Diego. I was housed just over a year and a half ago in permanent supportive housing through Alpha Project. I know someone personally that works at the Chula Vista Tiny Cabins, and they are low barrier. And they work. Low barrier does not mean that your, when you go in, your bags get searched. If they find drugs, they get rid of them. They write you up. They can throw you out. If you're caught using drugs in the facility, you're immediately exited from the facility. I've been in almost every shelter in San Diego. And only Alpha Project came through with their promise of housing. And I'm in permanent supportive housing, which is wraparound. We have wraparound services, peer counseling, everything you could want or need. And we have a community. We have community events. The reason why is because I'm dual-diagnosed. And the whole time I was on the streets, the only drugs I took were the ones that the doctors prescribed. No street drugs. Not everybody out there, you can put on one shoe fits all. Not everybody out there are drug addicts or mentally ill. Yes, I have mental issues. And I go to therapy, and I take meds for them now. Since I've been in housing, it has brought it all back up. And I support these cabins. And you guys are brave to go ahead and do this. Because if I had my choice, and I was on the streets, that's where I would want to be, in one of your cabins. Because you have a door you can close, and with that door comes peace, serenity, and dignity. Thank you.
Next, we have Larry Bonamo.
My name is Larry Bonamo. I'm a longtime resident of Lemon Grove and a longtime business owner in Spring Valley, over 45 years in each case. My business is directly across the street from this proposed site. We all want to help the homeless, but most of them don't want the help. They don't want to live by rules and regulations. They have mental and drug problems. So first, you have to address this problem. Homelessness is a big business. California has spent over $25 billion in the last six years. San Diego has spent $25 million in each of the last six years. This site doesn't do anything for the homeless in Spring Valley or Lemon Grove. We don't need another 70 to 140 people here. We already have enough problems here at this location. We, the business people and the citizens, have to deal with shopping carts, trash, fights, property they're using as a toilet, bothering our customers, breaking into homes, breaking into cars. The difference between Lemon Grove and Spring Valley is 42 feet of asphalt. That's all it is. Spring Valley has already turned down this project. We in Spring Valley will be impacted the most. What is wrong with Monica Montgomery? She knows that the citizens of Lemon Grove didn't want this proposed site. We have recently learned that these nonprofits and NGOs don't always spend the money for what it's intended for. It goes to benefit themselves and their friends. So ask yourself the question, what is it in, what is it in for Supervisor Montgomery and Mayor Snow and Mayor Proton Mendoza? Snow and Mendoza know that they could have put this on the agenda anytime in the last six to eight months. Why didn't they? What is their motive? Small children live next to this site. Children walk to and from school every day. There's a liquor store at the gas station, a marijuana dispensary at the end of the Sweetwater Road. This site will only contribute to the problems that's there. So this is left up to the new city council. The power is in your hands. Listen to the citizens and vote no on this project.
I will now turn it over to Erin to answer questions from the public.
Thank you, everybody. This, and I apologize in advance if I mispronounce names. Kiki Jones? I do not support the tiny homes project. City of San Diego population is 1.3 million, La Mesa 60,000, El Cajon 109, I think is what it says, thousand? Lemon Grove's 27,000. Why are we responsible for housing City of San Diego homeless? It's a terrible location on a busy street next to homes and schools, not to mention a liquor store. I'm just going to do one more. This is from Stephanie M. What happens to these individuals after the six-month time? Where do they go? To the city of Lemon Grove? Who pays for them to be escorted to their next destination, the city of Lemon Grove? So I think that might be for the county staff.
If you can very, very briefly answer those questions. And I also believe you previously said in your slide that this would be open to East County residents, primarily Lemon Grove and Spring Valley, correct?
Yes, this program would serve people from the nearby communities. And of course, we work with every individual who has a housing plan in the program to get them to the permanent housing. If people are not successful, of course, we would work with them, including providing transportation and many other supports to get them to their next program that might better suit them.
Next, we have Tanya or Tania Iraarte. And the next two speakers will be Audra and Christopher Bain.
Hello. My name is Tanya. I work for the city of Lemon Grove in Public Works. I'm a union member of ASME Local 127. I would like to talk for myself. I would like to talk for myself as an employee, not in behalf of the city, but from my own experiences as a coworker who works with other employees along. We are here every day trying to fight this homeless out there who are aggressive to us. Sometimes they don't respect us, they don't listen, they don't follow rules, they leave trash everywhere, they break our playgrounds, our public areas. They literally live in front of their skate park, one in front of the library, one in front of the rec center, a bunch at the parks. So if there could be something different about the situation that's happening right now, that would bring a lot of happiness to me as a community. As a community, as I live and work out here, my kids literally walk around and I am not even comfortable letting them be out here. Again, as an employee, I just want to make sure that we are heard. We are out here working. We are out here trying. I am so glad that the county is willing to step up and help us because we can't do this alone. Don't let the perfect be the enemy of good. It's an expression that means it's better to have something that's good enough than to wait for perfection. Let's all come together. Let's find the best solution for our community. We're not policy experts, but we do know the ins and outs of the city. We walk out here, we work out here, we drive out here, we have our families out here, and having homeless is just not the best thing out here for us.
All right, next we have Audra. Following Audra, Christopher Bane. Christopher Bane?
Hello? Public safety. Public safety is a pretty paramount topic, I think, for tonight. How many people are concerned about the safety of their children? By a show of hands? Yeah, right? That's, it's really important to make sure kids in this community are safe. And so that's one of the reasons why earlier today, I wanted to do a little research and find out some of the statistics and the facts around public safety, especially for kids. So I found this article, excuse me, it's called Child Homicide Perpetrators Worldwide: A Systematic Review. It's by five authors. It was published in 2017, and it looked at 126 studies worldwide. And one of the things that it found is that in high-income countries, 64% of homicides against children were committed against their parents, or, excuse me, by their parents. Another 12% were committed by acquaintances. So that's 76% of children who are killed in high-income countries are absolutely not in danger from homeless people. And so I think that's really important to look at. I'm sorry to say, but children are in more danger from their parents than they are from somebody who doesn't have a place to live. My second point is second chances. Five years ago, I came home from serving an eight-year prison term. I was looking at life in prison, and through a plea agreement, I was able to serve eight years, and I came home. I did a lot worse things than to get high and sleep on the sidewalk. Since coming home, I got my master's degree. I got a degree in conflict management and resolution. I got married. I got married last year to somebody that I met in school. I joined the union. I joined the International Union of Operating Engineers. And I bought a house here. Me and my wife, we bought a house in Lemon Grove. Of all the places we wanted to live, we really loved this neighborhood, this city, and we wanted to move here. So we did. And I want to raise a family here. So yeah, second chances. I'm a big fan of second chances. And I know there's a lot of scary things about this project, and there's some details to work out. But yeah, I think second chances are important. So, thank you.
All right, next up, we have Gilbert Chavez. The next two speakers is Danny Brunner. And I apologize if I mispronounced your name, Consuelo Consuela.
Good evening. My name is Angelica Camargo, and I'm representative of the Spring Valley Coalition 2024. The reason that I'm here is in regards to the Croy Street location. So when they rescinded last year, Nora Vargas listened to our community. She saw they was very close to the street, it was very close to the freeway, it wasn't a fit location for these type of tiny homes. I just want to tell the people, Lemon Grove, do not stop fighting for it. Because as that representative from the county say that we don't have a say on it, I spoke directly with Nora Vargas before she left the city, and she told me that we can do something about it. So I just have this writing. And to the City of Lemon Grove talks about being a good neighbor. This is a project, they is not showing you as a good neighbor to Spring Valley. That location is on the street of Seawater, and that pretends to Spring Valley, which we don't have that sheriff department, we don't have the fire department, we don't have anything. If you guys have it in Lemon Grove City, we do not have it on the part of Spring Valley. So who's going to take care of that part? This project, we believe, when you say they will have a parameters on rehab, counseling requirements, now we know it's a low barrier. It is a handout. You are requiring nothing in exchange. Taxpayers and
I'm so sorry, I'm going to stop you just for a second because we're having trouble difficulty hearing you. There's some kind of feedback, so I'm going to see if we can get that resolved. I'll give you your time back, for sure.
Kind of the same, okay. You are requiring nothing in exchange to live on these tiny homes. Taxpayers are footing the bill, and you are putting them in danger. We're the ones supporting that community. The middle class pay for the high classes, they don't pay taxes, and for the low class, they don't have to pay any taxes. So we're the ones. Now, our properties, they went down 7.8%. You put in that shelter in there. Right near two children's in school, we have a situation in Spring Valley when one homeless was tried to rent in a house when he was a 14-year-old. They called the sheriff department, sheriff department show up an hour after. So dad of that child show up before the sheriff department show up. So across the street is not a good idea. There's already a rise in crime, about 165% from the last couple of years. Can you imagine how high it's going to be after? You must either rescind this project, or the very least, do it the right way in a different location. All the tiny homes, they're away from the community. They're not in the middle of community, next to daycares or schools.
Angelica, your time is up. Next up, we have Danny Brunner. Following Danny Brunner, we have Consuelo Consuela.
Good evening. And I feel as a result of some of the questions from councilmember Aretia, that we finally got someplace. We've had people come here since June, since July, asking questions, asking for the matter to finally be agendized. And the question in the room is, do we have a say-so? Do we, can we categorically ask that the project not be brought here? And no one had the moral constitution to stand before the people and say, it is a done deal. And since we found that out today, and since your constituents seem to be in favor of getting rid of this project, will any of you all up there have the moral constitution to go down to Monica Montgomery's office and go to the board of supervisors and demand that this project be rescinded? Thank you.
Hi, so first off, I'm going to go out of order here. I wanted to point out that it wasn't so much that Nora Vargas came to the rescue, it was the people themselves that showed up at these county meetings in opposition. I also want to point out how this issue was put on the City of Lemon Grove. They initially had the county come to my community, which is in Benita, to propose this site. At that meeting, I warned my community that the county was only here to gauge our residents, to see how accepting they'd be and what they could get away with. Then the county went on to Spring Valley, and we know what happens there. It wasn't Nora, it was the people in opposition at these meetings who are paying attention. They were proactive in attending all these meetings. Okay, so I'm going to go back to what I wanted to say, and it was, so I'm so grateful and I'm hopeful for my Lemon Grove neighbors to see through the smoke and mirrors. Beautiful lip service today from the county and the dais. We know dang well, families will not be the ones who will be benefiting from this. This issue is not difficult at all to solve. This issue, like with many others in our county, it's, okay, sorry. What my neighbors of Lemon Grove may not know or clearly understand is that our homeless and mental health issues have been very lucrative. It is why their solutions have always been temporary. Federal funds have been endless. They will never even give you a solid answer for a valid question like, who will be able to access this housing? It should be 100% of the Lemon Grove's homeless families accessing these houses, but unfortunately, they won't get the opportunity to do so. When they speak of measuring success of the proposed future tenants, it's a total joke because there was already a program in the county that was, that literally had 100% actual success from every single person who was in it. That project was called Project 25. Look it up. What happened? It was defunded. Why? Because it worked. The people all recovered and became independent. In short, government needs us, dependent on them for everything. Why? For control. It's how we've gotten here and where we're at. So when you pause to think about it, it's a sick system, it's beyond corrupt. Yet, we all continue to fund this lunacy. Reminder, when they say government-funded, it is actually we, the people, taxpayers-funded, all of it.
I will now turn it over to Erin. Erin? No more? Okay. The next speaker is Paul Ornalis. Following Paul's comments, the next two speakers are Joy Banks and Beatrice Lopez.
Excuse me. Let me just tell you, I'm not a politician, I'm not a CPA, but I know one and one make two. And when you guys come up with $11 million for a project and it's only temporary, and then another $3 million to maintain it each year, you know, what's that come out to? $250,000 a year? So for $11 million, it seems like you could have bought the place catty-corner across street. I know it's in Spring Valley, and you won't get your hands, your palms greased on that one, but that property was for sale where the massage parlor is, and they could build, you know, 50 units right there, permanent housing, and, you know, seniors, people that are less fortunate. Recently, my daughter was homeless. Okay, I got her off the street, she has a trailer now. So I know we need a solution to this problem. But $11 million just seems extreme for tiny homes that are in a three-year lease from Caltrans, and $3 million a year to maintain it. All that money's just going down the toilet, and nobody even knows where it's going. And speaking of toilets, where is the sewer going to be for all those tiny homes? Are they going to have one little outhouse and share it? Or where's, you know? Have you thought of that? So my question is, where's that $11 million going? And $3 million a year to maintain it? And there's no facility there for job training or counseling or anything? So, you know?
I'm sorry, I don't mean to interrupt you. Are you done? I just, that's a really good question, yeah. So I'll direct the county to answer that.
Major cost categories for the construction would be utilities. We have to bring in electricity, we have to bring in sewer. There are six sewer, I'm sorry, there's six restrooms with showers, units that are going to be on the site. So the site is also, has a pretty steep slope to it. It's about 10% grade from top to bottom, so we need to level the site. We need to put in the landscaping, we need to put in the walkways, the roadways, the pavilions, and all of that adds up to what we currently estimate to be $11.1 million.
Next, we have Beatrice Lopez. Following Beatrice's comments, we have Darryl X-line and Aubrey Russell.
Hi, my name is Beatrice Lopez, and I'm a business owner in Lemon Grove. And I personally know a lot of people that care for the homeless. They go directly to them, they give them food, they help them out, they help them. So Lemon Grove cares for the homeless, they really do. But we don't think this is an answer. We don't, there's a lot of loose ends, there's a lot of questions. And, you know, I'm excited for the $8 million grant, but we need a committee to oversee it, make sure it's spent the right way. I literally see homeless every day in my business. I've been tried, I've been hit three times. So we need to help our homeless, hopefully that $8 million can be spent properly for that. But we as a community, we need to have a say, we need to have a voice, and we need to have a vote. And that's all we're asking for. And not that we don't care for the homeless, because I know people that do, I just, we just want to be heard. That's all we're asking. And a lot of people are not for this project and stuff. There's a lot of loose ends, a lot of confusion, a lot of questions. And a lot of questions here were not answered. So that's all I have to say.
Next up, we have Darryl X-line. Following Darryl's comments, we have Aubrey Russell and Goldie Gutierrez.
Good evening, mayor, members of the city council, my fellow resident of Lemon Grove. I'm here tonight to express my strong up to the proposed tiny home project here in Lemon Grove. While I recognize the need for solutions to homelessness, this project is not a responsible or effective way to address the issue. First, let's talk about the cost. This project being funded by $11 million from the state, money that ultimately comes from taxpayers, while it may not be directly in the city's budget, public money, and we still have a responsibility to ensure that it is spent wisely. The goal of this project is to transition people into permanent housing. But if we look at real-world results from similar projects, the return on investment is alarming. Consider the Chula Vista Tiny Home Project. I looked it up, I researched the numbers. It has now been operational long enough to provide a clear example of what we can expect. Out of their 65 units, only 40 are currently occupied, not because of a lack of demand, but because of ongoing maintenance issues that have made nearly 40% of the homes unlivable. Even more concerning, after all the money spent in the years it's been open, only 27 individuals have actually transitioned into permanent housing. If we apply that same pattern to the Lemon Grove project, we are looking at a situation where we might spend $11 million only to see a small handful of people, perhaps 40 at best, successfully move into stable housing. That equates to an astounding $275,000 per person that succeeds in the program. For that amount, we could rent each of them a home outright. Instead, we're talking about temporary structures that require ongoing repairs, staffing, and services with no guarantee of success. For $3 million per year in maintenance, that's another $50,000 per unit. Just give them the money if you're going to spend that kind of money on it. Why should Lemon Grove support Why should Lemon Grove support a project that has already proven ineffective in our neighboring city? Why should we accept a program that, based on real data, is likely to struggle with maintenance problems and fail to meet its long-term goals? If the state is willing to spend $11 million, we should be advocating for solutions that are proven to work, not experimental projects with a poor track record. Additionally, we must consider the impact on our community. While we all wanna help those in need, we must also acknowledge that poorly managed programs can lead to unintended consequences: a strain on local resources, increased crime, and declining neighborhood conditions. Other cities have learned these lessons the hard way. We have the benefit of learning from their mistakes before making our own. Lemon Grove has an opportunity to push back and demand better. We must urge the state to allocate this funding towards real lasting solutions, whether it's addiction counseling, job training, mental health resources, or other cost-effective strategies that address homelessness at its core. We cannot afford to throw $11 million at a plan-
Darryl, your time is up. Darryl, your time is up. Next, we have Aubrey Russell. Aubrey Russell, if you could come to the-
It's legal to do so now.
Thank you, Santa Claus. Hello, my name is Aubrey. I'm a native of LG. I'm speaking on behalf of myself and Lemon Grove Neighborhood Association. Allison, back in June, you left me a voicemail after the news broke out of you claiming LG Government wanted these tiny homes. This is when the San Diego Board voted unanimously yes in favor of this for our city. Now I'm going to quote you from June 25th, or 25th, 2024 at 8:34 PM from a voice message. "Hey Aubrey, it's Allison Snow. I just wanted to reach out. I want you to know I'm not off the rails, and we aren't going to do a single thing without getting a ton of community input and engagement and hear from everybody about what they want to do as far as the homeless crisis goes. I would love to talk to you and get your input. We are gonna do some town halls and community engagement on it, but I know your boots on the ground, and so... and do so much for in our community. And I really care about what you think." End quote. Do you still care about what I think? Do you care about what your constituents think? You voted yes to something, and you didn't even know what you voted yes to because you're sitting here, you said F-word across the way after you found out it wasn't for children and women. You said... Maybe it was... maybe it was fun. You might have not said F, you said fun, maybe F something. We did not get a bunch of community engagement. We did not get town halls. This is the first time we've been able to be here and speak to you and speak to now our new council about this since last... what was it, July? The people of LG have told you this countless times. Please put it on the agenda, please let's have a vote. Every meeting. We are done telling you. And now you have led the people to want to recall you. I know this is not what you wanted for your first term as mayor, and unfortunately, we didn't either. But you're using Lemon Grove as a political stepping stone, and we're watching. But by God as my witness, truth will be brought to light for Lemon Grove. Thank you.
Next, we have Goldie Gutierrez. Following Goldie's comments, I have Paul Rotheng and Yvette Woods.
This is too high. How do I? Hi, good evening to everyone. I'm... for years, I've lived in Lemon Grove, and I raised three beautiful daughters. And at the time that I was raising them, I had... I was so fortunate to have my mother help me. So a lot of the issues that I see nowadays, we weren't really facing them as severe as now. But this whole issue that is impactful to the community, I... today I came and I'm listening to what was going on, and I was utterly appalled to hear the panel, I think it was the mayor or someone there, said that they're just here doing this dealings, and the input or whatever the people are thinking, the residents of Lemon Grove, does not make a difference. It's not up to them, it's up to you to decide about these cabins. And I just... I, for a minute, I thought, "Where are we?" It sounded like a third-world country what you said to the people here because everyone was here because they wanna make sure that their voice and the decision over how this town needs to be addressed in terms of safety for their children. When I... when my children were little, I was always on top of making sure that they were safe. Now, as I see the city now, there are many problems that could be addressed before you try to move a project that is not even going to be successful as the way I heard that it's planned to be run. Six months to three years, and then people are gonna be changed. Well, it doesn't sound like a good business, even for the people that don't have a place to live. That does not sound something that is gonna be long-term and effective because it lacks a whole circle of making it work. It's not just to give you a shelter, but to have that type of dwellings for people that don't have a house, you need to work on other issues to make sure that they will be center and focused to change their lives. Not just come through the city and cause a ruckus and get all of the parents all worried about their children. And I do understand, I'm not a... I'm now a grandmother, but when I was a mother, I would have seen this as a very, very scary situation for my children. So when you said that even them being here, it doesn't count? It doesn't sound right. Why would you allow to open the doors for them to come? If you're not gonna be... By this time, I'm sure that you all know that the town opposes this issue of the houses for the homeless. So I'm just like, if you don't care... I mean, if this project, according to what I heard, is gonna go forward-
Goldie, your time is up. I will now call on Paul Ar-
Why do you have everyone here?
Following Paul Ar's comments, the next two speakers are Yvette Woods and Julie Porter.
Good evening. First off, thank you very much. You guys had great questions, counsel. I appreciate that, you answered some of mine. First off, homelessness has been forever. We used to call them hobos when we were growing up. So it's not been a problem that we're just learning about. Also, the homeless was addressed way back in the 90s when they talked about Petco Park. So the government just put it off. Everything's always put off, and this is why we're in what we are in. Lemon Grove is not the spot for it, the way you guys are doing it. My one question is, okay, when they do get kicked out, if that was the case, would they just be put out of the thing so now we're stuck with it in our neighborhoods? Another one is, why couldn't this be in a commercial area? Like Chula Vista's, but we did look up Chula Vista's, it was easy to access. It's a low success rate, so that's funny you guys couldn't get that. Someone did it right back there, like that. Also, I would think that would be less cap, 60 people, that's ridiculous. And another big thing is, that is state grounds, that's all. If I'm not mistaken, even in the prison system, which I worked for 30 years, there's no smoking on state grounds. So how are you gonna let these people smoke on state grounds? Even in the prison system, he knows you can't smoke in prison anymore. Think about that for the inmates, but yes, there's where your naivety is. You can paint this pretty picture of how it's gonna be. Let me tell you, in the prison system, drugs, alcohol, there's still smoking there, weapons. You're not gonna stop it. I've even heard, matter of fact, my sister who worked at the homeless in Riverside, they have squatters inside these cabins. Because how many security you gonna have? Let me tell you, being a prison guard, inmates know what to do. They can just stack me over here, boom, something's happening over here. It's funny how you have it set up with a little circle and stuff because it reminded me of CMC where I started, which is California Men's Colony. That circle, that tower, I had to deal with four gates. It was insane. Security's not gonna handle that. 60 people, that's crazy. So, that would be... and the other thing is, it's just security. So think about it. Do you jeopardize your job or your life for 20 bucks an hour? Probably not. I mean, even my little... as a prison guard, I didn't wanna die, but stuff happens and that's my job, I have to respond to it, so... Let's see what else, 'cause I'm all over. Are they drug tested periodically? You say this is not allowed and all that? Really, come on. I don't do drugs. Hmm. I had a brother who was a drug addict. He did time in prison, on and off, back and forth, getting programs. Ball, you know? Actually, he passed away two years ago. Alcohol, so...
Paul, your time is up.
Thank you.
Next, we have Yvette Woods. Following Yvette Woods, the next two speakers are Julie Porter and Ron Woods. Julie Porter.
Good evening. My name is Julie Porter, I'm with Lived Experience Advisors. I came from the street myself. I used to have a nice house right up the road here, in a nice neighborhood called Mount Helix. I lost my house. Divorce and the real estate bubble. I lost my house of 20 years. I ended up on the street. Did I turn to alcohol? Oh, yeah, I did. Did I become sober? On the street, I did. Through smart recovery. And through a very good program through UCSD that was funded by the county. I did it on my own. I chose a better way of life because I was paid attention to. I was seen as a human being. Now, I'm quite a bit older. I was housed in 2017. And yes, it was sad, and it's true. Seniors are the largest growing population of homeless today. That's because our social security doesn't go up to meet our rent. The rent keeps going up, but social doesn't, as you know. I make it by somehow. I got my permanent supportive housing. I volunteer in my neighborhood. I go to city council, I go to county Board of Supervisors, and tonight, I'm here in Lemon Grove. These tiny homes are a very good idea for a start, fresh start for some humans, some deserving humans that want it. And they can do it because they're humans. Humans aren't powerless. Thank you for hearing me tonight.
Next, we have Ron Woods. Following Ron Woods, the next two speakers are David Eckler and Victor Vega.
So first of all, I'd like to address that... How much money did you pay these high mediators here to come and stand up for you people? I mean, that's wasted taxpayer's money right there. Second of all, the county reps over here, they said they were looking in surrounding areas to make these decisions. And then they started talking about LA. LA is not our surrounding area. Asked about Chula Vista, you had no hard data. Like these gentlemen back here? I looked it up on my phone, took like two minutes. It's a failure. So, and to close, County Supervisor Monica Friends, which you said you were, Ms. Snow and Ms. Mendoza concocted a fairy tale that has failed to meet its original expectations. You guys should be ashamed of yourself.
Next up, we have David Eckler. Following David Eckler, I have Victor Vega and Angelica Carmago.
Good evening. Hey, first of all, I wanna thank the new council members for asking a lot of really important questions. I had an opportunity several months ago, several months ago, to go down to Chula Vista to circle the wagon on the homeless situation there, the tiny homes. And I was there about an hour and a half and almost got rested. Now, while I was there and sitting on the outside of the facility with another council member, they were doing drugs, and people were coming out. Guys were selling them or giving them alcohol, and they went back into the facility. Now, we're gonna have the same situation here in Lemon Grove on Troy Street. Two-minute walk from the school for kids. What we need is a wraparound program like Kiva, Jeanne McAllister, Freedom Ranch, that takes these individuals in for six months to a year and really works with them, and works with them hard. And even that percentage of success is low. But they really take a hold and challenge these individuals on all levels, spiritually, whatever their issue is, drugs, alcohol. They challenge them, and they confine them, and they're restricted. And it's usually the ones that really want help that become the success story. And these two individuals that were here earlier that shared about being homeless and making it happen, I commend you, I'm proud of you. But you've gotta have it in you to make it happen. But what we found out, and I found out in the last year and a half working with the homeless here in Lemon Grove, it is a hand-up, not a hand-out. And the reality is, unless somebody's really serious, they're not gonna get into a program, unless they're forced by family or whatever. It's not gonna happen, and it takes a long time for them to work through this. So don't kid yourself on the tiny home situation. It will not be a productive program, period. It's a revolving door where people come in and out, percentage-wise. I agree with you, elderly people, we've got a lot of people that are homeless. It's becoming a major issue. I took two people into my house for over 10 years, homeless people. Are you willing to do that? I did. But what we have in the street oftentimes? We have mental illness that's upwards of 60%, schizophrenia. We have some really heavy, underlying problems. And it really has to be wrapped around, and it has to be addressed on that issue. This is a farce. At least it was in Chula Vista, and I can't see it getting any better here. By the way-
Thank you, David, your time is up.
The whole time I was there, security was watching.
I will now call the next speaker, Victor Vega. Following Victor Vega, Angelica C.
I'm gonna throw out some quizzadistas for you guys here. In the last five years, Governor Newsom spent $24 billion on the homeless program. If we would have given every homeless person in California, which is about 187,000, we could have given them $157,000 each. That's good enough for a down payment on a condo or a house. Okay? If we're gonna do this here in Lemon Grove, you're just talking about spending $11 million. We could give each family right now $157,000. $157,000, that's good enough for a down payment. Or, like this gentleman said, why don't we pay their rent? We could give them $50,000 a year to pay their rent for one year. If it takes six months to get them back on their footing, one year would do miracles for them. Now, I looked up you guys' addresses, I couldn't find Ms. DeJana right there. Sir, you live in Rancho Penasquitos, correct? Sir, you live in Coronado. You live in Rancho Bernardo. Right. Why does Coronado have a homeless law where they can't camp out there, and you ship your people out of Coronado? How come we're not building these houses in Coronado? Rancho Penasquitos, Rancho Bernardo, Solana Beach, Lemon Grove? Not Lemon Grove. I am gonna ask you the same thing that I asked Ms. Montgomery. Why don't you guys put an AUD in your backyard and allow these people- Why don't you guys put an AUD in your backyard and allow these people to come in? You got, I know you know seventy people, seventy people that could allow these people in. And as far as the city council, you guys have the moral authority from us or the moral responsibility to talk to these gentlemen and this lady and let them know that we don't want these here. I don't think the people of Lemon Grove are against helping the homeless. We just know that this doesn't work. And as a prior line enforcement officer, when people don't want help, they're not going to get it. And you can bring in an local home police department officer that will tell you right now that in the homeless department, they'll tell them, "I like living on my own. I like doing what I like." And they don't want to live by the responsibilities. You guys have that moral responsibility to tell them that we don't want them here. Half the people here are already gone because I think they're tired of listening to this argument that these things are going to be a success, and it's not. And I've lived here thirty years, and I've watched Lemon Grove go downhill, and this is going to make it worse. Gentlemen, we need to push this somewhere else. Ask La Jolla. Ask Damar. Ask Carlsbad, Solana Beach, La Costa. Why can't we do it up there? We have plenty of open land up there where you could put something. Plenty. Listen to the people of Lemon Grove. That's you, city council. Listen to the people of Lemon Grove.
Thank you, Victor. I will now turn to Angelica Carmargo.
There's a nice point on something, okay? So, it sounded a bit like an attack on the folks that were out there. These folks, just wait a minute, these folks are technical staff members from the county of San Diego. They are not influencing the decisions in their local communities like that.
Sure. It's not an attack, local facts.
I, I understand, but if, if you guys could avoid directing your anger at the folks who are technical staff, I would really appreciate it. They're here to answer questions and do their job. That's what it's for.
You're going to do what we want with you. You're in our town. We're going to do what we want with you.
Ma'am, I'm just warning you right now, okay? We're going to try to get through this. We only have forty more minutes, okay? So, we're trying to get through all the speakers. Ma'am, please continue.
Here I am again, talking about my personal, my personal experience. I am a healthcare provider. I used to work for some beans in the pile. I know when a homeless person doesn't want to get help, he's not going to get it. I've been working in the healthcare field for more than twenty years, and I see falls coming in, overdose, and they never get better, some of them. And it's the same thing. We don't have to pay taxes. We don't have to work. They give us cow works. They give, they give us food stamps. Why we have to work for it? I even went to ask one of the liquor stores in there, "Do you agree with this in here?" And he said, "That's business for me." Do you see that massage house? You know, all the area on Troy Street is, we have the reports in here of how many times the chair has been pulled. And it's like child prostitution, drugs, places they say they give massage, and it's a drag house, fentanyl. Why you guys want to put these in the middle of that community? That's my question. The county owns thousands of properties. They will take like no more than five million dollars to fix it, to house all these people. Why you guys want to put it in the middle of that community? When a, when a child gets lashed, or when a child gets molested, or elderly people gets, you know, killed by one of these members, do you guys going to be responsible for that? Who's going to be responsible when something like that happen? Because it's still happening. Spring Valley is getting, it's getting worse day by day, and we don't have the chair. If you guys put in this shelter in there, it's not helping us neither. And we don't want it in there because it's Spring Valley. It's not only Lemon Grove. We are neighbors. We need to work together. We don't want it in there. I was there, Mayor, when you offered the city of Lemon Grove. You say, "We want the shelter in there." I was there. I was there in the private meeting with Monica, and I see all the ugliness behind closed doors. And I am not, like I say, I'm here protecting my community, my child's, that future is going to be a bunch of high school kids graduating from high school. We know home. We know home. Those are the people that we need to help, not someone that doesn't want to get help. Our future. We need to help our future, not these people that they don't want to get help. Have a, have a project like some beans in the pile. They live there. They have to live there. They have to get therapy. They have to, it's a lot of mental health issues in here. Schizophrenia. If you pass right now for, by Hamacher Road, you cannot pass by there because why? Because it's a person with schizophrenia carrying a big pit bull in there. Everyone goes around, and the morning when the kids go there, it's a bunch of parents that have to be there to take care of them.
Thank you, Angelica, for your comments. I will now call on Ellen Nash, followed by Ellen Nash. The next two speakers are John Micno and Joanne G. Ellen Nash?
Hi, council and fellow citizens. Thank you. When I was a kid, my family became homeless. I was alone on the street and scared. Actually, went over to the Dunkin' Donuts over here and jumped into the trash can and pulled some donuts out so I'd had enough to eat. I felt overwhelmed. People from my church took me in. I finished high school and eventually I got a job. I'm so lucky those people helped me. My friend lives here in Lemon Grove. He's a homeowner. He creates jobs. He's building a beautiful second home. He has long hair and a beard, and when people drive by as he walks down the street, they stop their cars and they start screaming at him, telling him to get out of Lemon Grove because he looks like he's homeless. But he's actually volunteering at the community garden to help people grow food. People are so scared of his beard, but he's causing our property values to rise. In Lemon Grove recently, there's been an eighty-five percent increase in homeless. We all want safety. I had some homeless people movement across the street from me last year, and I was concerned. Our security might be if we were to banish all the homeless and ship them out far, far away from us. Or our security might be in helping the homeless to be more secure. Either is magical thinking. Let's examine the evidence, ask questions, and learn more. How does this project do the best it can with the funds available to really do better than other projects could do? I know the experts really have studied this and you understand it a lot better than we do, so that's a question I'd be interested to learn more about. I get the sense that the plan has wraparound services. When people are homeless, they need a place to clear their head, think clearly, plan, work on a plan to get a job, go to school, get back on your feet, food, shelter, security. They need case management, food, and medical attention. That's what we all want for our children. That's what we all want for our best friends. That's what I want for each one of us. I want us to be happy and at peace.
Thank you, John, for your comments. The next speaker we have is Joanne G., followed by Joanne G. The next two speakers are Audra and Angela Cabrera.
Good evening, everyone. I would like to thank the people who came up to speak, who, thank you, who put a human face on homeless. We say homeless like it's one entity that's all alike. If you ever talk to somebody who's on the street, and, and it's a group, so in that group, you're going to have good people and bad people. Any neighborhood in any city is going to have good people and bad people. It's going to have drug addicts and ministers. I mean, it's a group. But when you see these people in our town, huddled in a corner, soaking wet from the rain, their blankets are wet, if your heart doesn't break, then something's not human within us. I don't know this project. I don't know all the plans. I, I pray that it is going to be a good plan because you've reached out to other people who have tried different things and found something that worked. But unless you have something better to recommend, except get them out of my backyard, let's look at what we have, this opportunity to help people who need help. Thank you so much for your time tonight.
Next, we have Audra. Angela Cabrera. And the last speaker slip I have is Humbert Cabrera. Oh, Joy, and then Joy Banks. Ms. Banks? We got one more.
Hi, my name is Joy, and I'm a resident here and a constituent in Lemon Grove. And I've lived here almost five years now. I'm also, well, I'm first of all, a child of God, and I get real disappointed with all the them and us. You know, it, it's a hurtful thing, you know? I, when I'm eating my meals, I don't forget about the people that don't have anything, you know? I don't forget about people that don't have a pillow and a bed when I'm laying down my own head. I hear the divisiveness in the community, and it's like, a lot of it, I, city council members, I was not informed of anything. I was told it was limited funds. I think if there was more transparency, there was a budget, if there's twenty-seven thousand people here, twenty-seven thousand pieces of paper to inform people of what's going on once a month or so, there should be a budget for that. I also believe there should be an oversight committee that includes people with lived experience on the premises and an oversight committee for the council with this project because it's real important. And also, congratulations on the grant that you fought for and won for the city of Lemon Grove to help the homeless. My heart goes out to everybody in this room, whether you're housed, whether you're black, whether you're brown, whether you're white, all of the above. And, but first of all, I'm a child of God, and I am, I, I have lived experience. I know what it's like to be out there clean and sober for an extended period. But I would hesitate to, I, I think there would not have been hope for me if I had to move into such a hostile environment, you know, such us-them, and to be so unwanted, you know, between the county, the city, Alpha, the churches. I was surrounded with wraparound services. I was a college student trying to make, and then I thought I was the only college student trying to make it in a glass house on wheels. And then I discovered there's other students at universities and colleges going through the same thing, trying to better themselves. There's people at your jobs that you don't even know. They don't have a place to go once they get in the car.
Thank you, Joy.
There's people next.
Joy, your time is up.
But I just encourage us all to think more about unity and caring. Thank you.
So, we received at the last second here, some comments and questions from a young lady in the back. We need a win-win-win solution. Some of the questions, "Why are they not requiring drug and alcohol testing that should be done? Screening is important." "What about rehab for those not ready for these shelters? Example, out in the country, other open areas, a restoration farm, wraparound services." "Can the houses be larger in size to accommodate a family, two to four, and have fewer houses?" "Can we do it for Lemon Grove residents specifically?" "Can we get a copy of the presentation PowerPoint?" I know there is copies in the back of the presentation PowerPoint. "Will there be faculty for job training, counseling?" It says utilities in a question mark. And then, "What cons do you see? What pros do you see? How can they transition into housing? Why not provide rental for them, like I guess rental income for them? Can we put this to a vote? We have no say?" And "What do we, Lemon Grove, gain by having it here?" Question mark.
Thank you, thank you, Erin. I'm going to turn it over to the county team. I know you can't answer all of those questions, but if you can answer some of those questions, especially about the behavioral health and the job training and the issues that were, were brought up. And then, Scott, if you can talk a little bit about the layout and why we're looking at what we're looking at in the sixty percent design of the two units opposed to four units.
Thank you, Lydia. Yes, I will address the question about behavioral health services. So, county, of course, also administers behavioral health services regionwide. There's a huge continuum of care from behavioral health that includes a variety, a number of services outpatient, inpatient treatment, and everything that may be based on a person's needs. So, if a person that we encounter during outreach is in need of those services, they certainly are connected and referred to those services. As mentioned, we will have a behavioral health assessment on site and connect people that are in need of those services to, to them. So, additionally, as I mentioned in the presentation, and we'll certainly, there's a, there was a barcode, and it's a barcode on our posters that takes you to an SD Engage website where all the, all the relevant materials related to this project, including board letters, prior presentations, and all the other informational materials, including the renderings, are
And I think the question was, why not have cabins that can house families? And the reason is, we built the, we're designing the facility to meet the needs of our Office of Homeless Solutions. If they asked us to provide cabins or said that the program included cabins for families, we could provide them. But as Deanna mentioned, they have separate programs for families in need, so we've designed it for what Office of Homeless Solution needs.
Okay, well, thank you so much to the county staff. Thank you, you guys. You have some great questions there and some really thoughtful comments to share. So, thank you so much. And we'd like to hand these back to Mayor Snow.
And then Mayor Snow, if I may. Mayor Snow and council members, all speaker slips have been called. As a note and for the record, written public comment was received for tonight's agenda item. Copies of those letters have been distributed to all those seated at the dais, and a public review copy can be found in the back table for viewing. That is all I have.
Okay, so now we've closed the public comment portion of the meeting, and now we'll have the opportunity for the council to be able to deliberate. I'll give each of you about two minutes to be able to say and make recommendations based on what we've been provided today. And we can give direction to our city staff to follow up and our input to the county. This is the time to do that. So, we'll go ahead and we will start with Councilmember Yedira Altamorano.
We want to hear from you guys. That's going to take you guys longer. Can we not interrupt, please? We need to let the people go. How do you? We want to know your thoughts. Again, no interruptions, please. Thank you so much.
And that's, that's your third warning, and so after that, you'll be asked to leave. Thank you.
I think the community has spoken. The community has spoken. We have heard you guys. Lemon Grove- Lemon Grove is a very caring community. We want to care for all of our neighbors, the housed and the unhoused. We believe that establishing a shelter is, in an appropriate location, is essential. We need a shelter in Lemon Grove. We need a shelter that can house our students, our women, our seniors. We need something safe that has parameters that people can follow and that can be held accountable, accountable. My family and I dedicated two years to serve the homeless by feeding them every single weekend, and I never, ever encountered, had a, had a bad encounter. They were all super grateful and nice and happy that we were there. However, after living across the street from a transitional, transitional living home for 12 years, we've faced significant challenges. Many individuals dealing with mental illness, substance abuse, and addiction have caused disturbances in our neighborhood. Often, often walking up and down naked, yelling, screaming, or blocking our driveway so we wouldn't be able to get out in the morning, sleeping under a tree drunk. These are, this is the type of experience that I've had, personally have had with these types of homes for these types of people because there is no accountability. There is no drug testing. They just want to house them. And this is the prime example of how sometimes housing first does not work. We need to house them, but not everything works for all people. There's frequent visits from ambulance and police three to four times a week, and this has created an unsettling environment for our family and our community. Families and children that attend Mount Vernon Elementary walk across the street where there is no sidewalks to avoid walking by this residence where people congregate outside all day long. This is an example, again, of how housing first does not work. The proposed location for the new shelter raises a lot of safety concerns. It is used, it used to be a nursery, and the soil can be contaminated with chemicals and pesticides. I wouldn't put my pets there. I said that earlier. I would not dare put a human being there. So the concerns me that CEQA studies are exempt. Additionally, the area lacks sidewalks, which we did hear that there will be, there will be sidewalks placed there. Very high traffic, and it's situated directly across from a liquor store and nearby many schools. We do need a shelter in Lemon Grove, and we do need to house some of, some of our people. Can we put the right people there? Or can we find an alternate location? This situation is particularly concerning for an already economically disadvantaged community. We want better for our children. We want better for our community. And we believe that if we truly want to help the unhoused, we should prioritize them and get them the necessary support such as drug and alcohol rehabilitation and mental health services before establishing a shelter and a location that may not be suitable for everyone involved. $11 million is a lot of money, and, and the contract, the lease, is only going to be for two or three years. Like some of our neighbors were saying, it makes no sense. The numbers are not adding up. The math ain't mathin'. I would not oppose a project like the one in El Cajon that houses women and children or seniors or teenagers. East County Transitional Center has an 80% success rate. Others have 100% success rate. That's what we need here. We're not opposed to housing our unhoused neighbors. We're opposed to the type of project that you are proposing. Let's come together, let's get together and think of something better. Let's work together. We want to work with the county. We want better for our community. And, and I'm very hopeful that we can work together in finding solutions that work, that actually work, not, not this. This is not going to work. Thank you, guys, for coming here. We've been wanting this for a long time, and thank you, guys, that you guys were courageous enough to face our community. Appreciate you, guys.
Councilmember Heredia?
Okay, so sorry, I, I'm going to try to do this in two minutes. First of all, there were some slides.
And Councilmember Heredia, I gave Councilmember Altamorano quite a bit of additional time. It's just, we're, we're trying to get out of here by 9:30, so if you've prepared comments, I'm, I'm happy to give you a little more time.
Thank you, I appreciate that. So first of all, I want to address that during the presentation, there were some slides at the end I noticed were not presented to the public through the staff report. If those could get emailed out to the council and given to staff to put on the website, that'd be great. I'm glad that the neighboring cities came to speak to us, but I want to be very clear, none of the programs they mentioned are anything like this program. And so it's really disingenuous to come in here and advocate for our, this program when it doesn't impact them and it is nothing like the successes that they're experiencing. If we were offered any of those programs, we would have gladly accepted. First of all, it's also, this is a three and a half mile town or just roughly above that. We shouldn't be burdened as the first of its kind of these tiny cabins in a 3.5 mile town with an average income of $66,000. In fact, what would be better is if you gave the $333,000 each one of these cabins is going to cost over the three years to the residents for down payments for homes or to keep them in housing. After hearing the public works, I'm all for advocating for, if this project does have to go through, that we just put Lemon Grove homeless in it. It shouldn't be going to other people. If there's room at the end of the day for Santee's little, Santee's people to come over to the little cabin, great. They can add money to the coffers to pay for that expense. And we need to enforce our no camping ban.
Yes.
We need more CARES Act programs. I think there's 50-something beds so far for the CARES Act where we can actually be conservatorships for mentally ill and drug users. That program is what we should be focusing our money on. All these utilities that you're bringing in for a three-year plan makes no sense. That's a waste of everything I can think of. And it's putting an impact on the land that is probably not going to be used for that for any kind of long-term, it sounds like. We need to use this money to prevent homelessness. I'm sorry, but I'm a single mom, low income, I'm a renter. I, I face homelessness every single day. I wake up thinking, God, I hope my landlord doesn't die, you know? But we're not doing anything for those people. So let's focus on that more and then help the ones that want the help, okay? And I'd like to make a motion that we go into a closed session with the new leadership team, who feels very differently than the last leadership team, and actually discuss what our rights are, if we want to pursue litigation, and also, so that we can direct staff, which is our job, to direct the city manager on what, what we want. It's about us, and we're the voice, okay? Even if it's us up here that has to do that for, for the community, you can trust that there's three people up here that are going to be your voice. All right? We're here for you. Don't, don't give up, Lemon Grove. I think we can, we can find either a compromise or a better program. I'm hopeful that we can because Lemon Grove homeless, they, I want to see them helped. I don't care about anybody else right now. I, I'm in a situation in a three and a half mile town where there's way too many homeless people, and if you're not going to service them first, then I'm not in support of this project. And yes, I don't want low barrier or anything. Thank you for coming.
Councilmember Fayyeh?
I'm going to respect my two minutes, actually. Let's see. Majority of elected officials, when they decide to run for office, highlight a few things that they're passionate about. They create a buzz, talking points, and excitement throughout the city from its constituents about the change they can bring to the community. Here's a short list of some ideas that they campaign on. Infrastructure, public safety, homelessness, community programs, community and business improvement, et cetera. The list goes on and on. Yes, I personally campaigned on a lot of these ideas, not because I wanted to win or begin a career in politics, but because I care. And I want to be part of the change that so many in our communities have been promised but have yet seen. So while campaigning, going door to door, we wanted to get a feel for what our community was concerned about. We wanted to find out how we can be different from the past leadership and do our part in serving them better. So I asked a two-part question. Do you shop here in Lemon Grove? Sadly, six out of 10 homes said no. They shop in neighboring cities, La Mesa, El Cajon, Santee, and San Diego. My follow-up question would be, why not? And their answers, we don't feel safe. We're concerned about the homeless and unhoused on our streets. Here is where we are, here is where we really have to think about our community as a whole. The answer to one is the cure for the other. So being able to help our unhoused and homeless community with wraparound services, help them transition from the streets to permanent housing, will in turn help keep our streets clean and safe for the rest of our communities. I believe that some kind of transitional living and around-the-block services is the absolute right thing to do. I just don't think Troy Street is the right place for it. I'm not interested in Band-Aids. I'm interested in the cure. So many of us, so many of us are passionate about helping those who are less fortunate. God forbid anything ever happens to my two boys. I would hate for you to know who my two boys were and for you to drive by them every single day. We have a moral obligation to the least of these, is what the Bible says, to the least of these. We have an obligation to make sure that we're for the whole community. Listen, here's the deal. People say, oh, it's, it's, it's our homeless, their homeless. Homeless is homeless. These guys, they hop on the trolley. They go from San Diego to Lemon Grove to El Cajon to Santee. They go from place to place. Homeless is homeless, regardless of who they are or where they're from. It's to the least of these. So my, so listen, I, I, I'm just like, you know, Councilmember Altamorano, and Jessica, let's say, I'm for us helping get these people off the streets, our neighbors off the streets, but let's do it the right way. Let's be different. Let's not be the, the people who waste money and all that stuff. Let's be, let's be the council, let's be the, the community, let's be the city with hardcore results. So when people, when the, when the community or when the county goes off and they pitch this somewhere else, they can use Lemon Grove as a positive, as a successful, you know, community that's done it right, and we're doing for the long run. Our people deserve better. And listen, I, I agree with Councilmember Heredia, and I second that motion. Thank you.
Mayor Potem Mendoza?
So I'm, I'm, I too am not opposed to going into closed session to discuss this further. But I, I am, I am disappointed. You know, we heard from a lot of people tonight, and I appreciate everyone who's, not everybody's here still, but I appreciate everyone who came out and who spoke. And I, I didn't hear one person suggest where another, an alternative site. So that is disappointing to me. And I, the only alternative I heard was La Jolla, Coronado. Unrealistic.
Why is it unrealistic? Why do you think about the unhoused?
Former council member, that is your fourth warning. Please leave.
They put a motion? You guys are going to vote on it? You're going to discuss it in closed session? It's your job to suggest a narrative. Eric Clamton, you have no control in Lemon Grove anymore. Realize it. You lost the majority, bitch.
Yeah, very professional. So, yeah, I'm disappointed. You know, everyone that's here, no one has another suggestion. Let's help our homeless, just not in Lemon Grove. Well, they live here in Lemon Grove. They work here. And, and don't tell me, no, that, you know, they don't have jobs. They do. Some of these people have jobs. So let's, let's go to closed session. My suggestion, too, is while we're in closed session, that we talk about, that we consolidate the suggestions that we have heard from the public tonight. We have heard some very good suggestions from our community and from those of us here on the dais, and that we consolidate those questions and find a way to work with the county. This is an, we've, we've been, we've been offered an incredible opportunity here in Lemon Grove. Help for our homeless that costs our city nothing. We don't have to take any money away from fixing our streets, fixing our sewers, taking care of all the, firing a deputy. We don't have to take any money away from those things because the county is going to be paying for this. I remember years ago, and I'm going to, I'm going to wrap this up really quickly. The reason I ran, one of the reasons I ran for office, this city got an $11 million grant to build a brand-new library. And that city council sent the money back and didn't build a library. Eventually, we got a library, but we could have had a library, a good, a brand-new library 20, 20 years ago, and we didn't. So I think it's, it would be foolish of us, for us, to turn this, this gift from the county away. And so, those are my, those are my comments.
If I could take just a moment regarding the closed session, it only takes two council members to support an agendized item in order for it to be agendized. So with the two, we have support that will be agendized. You obviously have three in support, so you are well within those boundaries. And also, with regard to closed sessions, there are limits on what you can discuss in closed session. And so I would encourage you all to discuss those things that are open to the public now or in a future agenda item. Just to my fellow council members, where would you propose to put the site? With Councilmember Altamorano?
I assume you need one.
That's your, this will be your first warning, Mr. X-line?
Can the county give us a list of the locations that they had initially came up with? I think a good area would be, industrial area would be off of federal. I understand this right here is Caltrans-owned, but can we secure something off of federal? Or can we change the type of individuals that will be housed at this location on, on Troy? I, I think the location for the type of individuals that we want to put there is not a good match. Can we put, can we make it Lemon Grove, and can we make it moms, seniors, teenagers?
Okay, Councilmember Heredia?
Okay, yes, I have two ideas I'd like to share. I don't think that the tiny cabins project fits in this town at all, just because, again, we are a three and a half mile town, and we don't actually own any land as a city to give them. And so one of my things, I, I do like the parking, safe parking, and I think that's great because it does accommodate families well. I went to the Spring Valley one when it first opened, and it was, looked like a pretty good setup. So I suggest that we put a similar project with safe house, safe parking, excuse me, under our LED sign. It's close to the trolley, it's close to services, and it's mostly away from housing. Also, I like the Health and Human Services parking lot. It's very underutilized, and because the parkings are from 5:00 AM to 5:00 PM generally, it doesn't impact their business day.
It's private property, and they said no.
Okay, well, I'm giving you what I got.
Okay, all right. And Councilmember Fayyeh, where would you put this?
One, I would like to see if the county can come with- One, I would like to see if the county can come with some other options. I mean, I've only heard of the two options, the one in Spring Valley and Troy Street. And then the other, the other area that I would suggest that we, if we could look at it, would be just right off of Federal Boulevard in the industrial area there. Thank you.
Okay, so when I first spoke, I talked about, we're going to need a lot of different things in order to get us where we need to go, and none of them are mutually exclusive. So at the same time that we are working to keep renters and their home, the same time that we're helping people who live behind food for less, the same time we're trying to help working families stay with a roof over their head, we can do all of those things at the same time. It's not mutually exclusive. But what is finite and what doesn't come every day is $11.1 million to help. We do not have anywhere close to the kind of investment that it takes to have real solutions to get stuff done. You cannot just put a roof over somebody's head and say, you're good. That does not work. What works is housing plus services. One without the other, totally ineffective. So I have done my homework on this. I have sat for hours and hours and hours researching what is the best possible solution for our homeless, for people who are struggling right now, and this is one of them. This is one aspect that gives us a roof over their head, a door that they can shut at night. You heard firsthand what it means to be able to shut a door at night and be able to sleep knowing that nobody's going to sneak up on you, that nobody's going to, like, bump into you, that nobody's going to assault you. You could have your animal there. You have that opportunity. And so this is a very good solution. It is in our hands. So you may not want it, but what happens is there are people that need this solution. There are people, there are people that really need this. And so until, and I personally have gone out and gone to different parts of the city. I thought maybe underneath the 125 might be an area. I went and explored that. I went and did all the homework to try and find a place where this would fit. And quite frankly, that's why it got narrowed down to Troy Street. There is a freeway that abuts it. There's a nursery on the other side of it, so it has minimal impact to a high-traffic business because there's a lot of trees and plants there. And then we do have an issue with the car wash and the convenience store that's right there, and we're going to have to do things to mitigate the harm to them and to the neighbors next door. We have backed, if you look at the diagrams, we've moved all the homes as far as possible along the fence line where there are neighbors. We are trying to make this work. I think we've heard some excellent suggestions from all the councilmembers up here on how to make this work, and I think there is consensus up here that we need a solution for Lemon Grove. I don't, we need to take care of our own. This is our responsibility. That's how I see it. And I think that this is a good, fair solution for that. If we, like Spring Valley, throw away $11.1 million, that would help anyone. I only, if one person gets lifted out of homelessness, if we throw that away for them, that's on us. That is on us. It's on the homeless person?
It's on everything. It's not on me. It's on all of us.
So you have the opportunity to help facilitate this, and you want to say no to that money?
It's $20 million. First of all, I'll be very clear about that. It's $20 million because it's $3 million a year for three years on top of it. So let's not forget that part, but I'm not against helping the homeless. What I'm against is throwing money away at programs that don't work. We've already shown that to you, and you still want to push it. They're not saying that they're going to give us any of the consensus that we want as far as families. It sounds like we're not. So you could just write that off.
Can we get that from the county? Can you guys confirm if there's anything that you guys can do as far as what we are requesting?
So we definitely are taking all the feedback, and we're jotting everything down and appreciate the feedback.
We want to work with you guys, and we want these resources, not just for Spring Valley and East County. We want them for Lemon Grove.
So thank you so much. We're going to go ahead. So we're going to go ahead and close the meeting now. Thank you, everyone who's come and provided comment. There were a lot of people, and thank you for the decorum. This was a much better meeting than what we had back in June, and it is because of your participation and your willingness to be able to have a good conversation here. I, like, we take your comments very seriously. We are going to try and convey this message in a strong letter from the city of Lemon Grove to the county and really push for these issues, and we will continue to be pushing for these issues. And so that's, this is the end of the meeting. The next city council meeting will be on Tuesday, March 18, 2025, at 6:00 p.m. back in the regular city council chambers. This meeting's now adjourned. Thank you.